Can everybody settle down? Settle down, please. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Finance, jointly with General Welfare and Oversight and Investigation. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk and fill out a testimony slip. A written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, good morning and welcome to today's joint hearing of the Committee on Finance with the Committees on General Welfare and Oversight and Investigations. I'm Councilman Justin Brennan. I chair the Finance Committee. We've been joined this morning, of course, by our Speaker, by Deputy Speaker Ayala, Council Members Lewis, Majority Leader Powers, Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, Council Members Barron, Brewer, Hanks, Hudson, Stevens, Ung Lee, as well as our public advocate. We're here today to both examine both the present and projected costs of the city for addressing the asylum seeker crisis. But before I go any further, I'm going to invite our Speaker, Adrienne Adams, to give her opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I am New York City Council Speaker Adrienne Adams, and I thank you all for joining us today. Thank you once again to Finance Chair Justin Brennan, General Welfare Chair Diana Ayala, and Oversight and Investigations Chair Gail Brewer for leading today's critical hearing on the city's actual and projected costs related to asylum seeker response efforts. Since last year, New York City has welcomed tens of thousands of people seeking asylum who are fleeing dire humanitarian conditions and violence in the United States. The city has provided support to many of those seeking to establish a better life here for themselves and their families through the provision of shelter, food, and other essential services. The council has advocated for comprehensive solutions to support our new arrivals and longtime New Yorkers in the city's shelter system, including the removal of barriers to housing vouchers for longtime homeless shelter residents, and urging expedited federal work authorization for migrants to achieve self-sufficiency through employment. While the Biden administration's redesignation of temporary protected status for Venezuela charts a path for thousands of people to receive work permits, we know there are additional solutions needed to provide greater relief. At today's joint oversight hearing, we are examining the city's spending decisions and estimates related to different services it's providing. We want to ensure that the city is using taxpayer dollars efficiently and also receiving effective services through its spending. The administration indicated that it had spent $1.45 billion on services for asylum seekers in fiscal year 2023. In the adopted fiscal year 2024 budget, there was approximately double the amount, $2.9 billion, allocated to cover expenses with services. However, in August, the administration released new projections that estimated that the cost of care would increase to $4.7 billion by the end of the current fiscal year, and that would increase to another $6.1 billion in the next fiscal year. These projections represent a significant increase. Of equal concern is the fact that the per diem cost for individual asylum seekers has also risen, raising questions about the efficiency of our spending, given that economics of scale are not being achieved. As a council, we want to gain a better understanding of how and why these per diem costs are increasing. The per diem cost estimate as of January was $363 across all agencies and types of asylum seeker shelter. During budget negotiations and adoption, the administration indicated this per diem would be reduced. However, the per diem rate increased to 383 as of July 31st, 387 as of September 11th, and 394 as of October 10th. When we're providing more services for an increased population, the cost of services per person should be going down. It is perplexing why the projections do not reflect this and continue to rise. Additionally, it's troubling that these per diem rates are exponentially higher than those of the Department of Homeless Services, which is the city's largest shelter administering agency. In fiscal year 2022, the last year in which DHS per diem cost did not include the housing of asylum seekers, the DHS per diem cost was 136 for single adults, 172 for adult families, and 188 for families with children. We look forward into digging deeper into the city's spending and examining how duplication of services is being eliminated and efficiencies are being achieved. With so many different city agencies and third-party contractors involved, it is vital that we break down who is providing which services to whom, if these services are effectively supporting those who need them, and whether what is being paid for services provided is indeed efficient. As we enter the third year of welcoming people seeking asylum, it is critical that our city shifts our mindset and our approach away from expensive emergency spending and towards long-term planning that achieves economies of scale and efficiency. There are important questions about whether it's effective or cost-efficient for private emergency contractors to continue being relied upon for these responsibilities, or if certain services can be shifted to mission-driven nonprofit organizations that have already been doing the work and are invested in the long-term success of our communities and those being served. I look forward to hearing from city agencies, advocates, and the public about how we can best support those seeking asylum and plan for the long-term success of our city. I want to thank council's legislative, finance, and Oversight and Investigation staff for their hard work on today's crucial hearing. Now, I will turn it back over to Chair Brennan.
Thank you, Speaker. In April of 2022, the city first noticed an increase in new shelter applicants who identified as persons seeking asylum. In the 16 months since, over 130,000 men, women, and children have arrived in the city looking for shelter and for some solid ground as they seek to restart their lives. In that time, the administration has spent $1.45 billion in FY '23 on asylum seeker response efforts, with another $1 billion in FY '24 as of September 30th of this year. That $1 billion represents approximately 34% of the funding budgeted to asylum seeker response efforts costs in the FY '24 adopted budget. Going forward, the administration determines projected costs for asylum seekers by calculating a cost per day or per diem cost per household for provision of services. The administration has shared per diem costs with the council at various points in time, but in many instances, how these costs are calculated remain unclear. In November 2022, the administration reported two projected per diem costs, as the Speaker mentioned, $254 for DHS shelters and $400 for HIRCs. This January, the administration reported the city's per diem cost was $363 across all agency and types of asylum-seeking shelter. However, as of October 10, the administration has now reported that cost was $394. Since day one, we've said our compassion as New Yorkers is infinite, but our resources certainly are not. I do not believe managing and financing an international humanitarian crisis is the responsibility of a municipality, or certainly should not be the responsibility of a municipality alone. I believe we should be focusing our collective efforts at all levels of government on expanding TPS eligibility and allowing newcomers to work so they can become self-sufficient and contribute to our economy by paying taxes. All that said, looking back on the frustrating uphill fight we've had to date in securing assistance in this crisis from our partners in government, particularly from Washington, now more than ever, we need to be sure that we're allocating responsibly, efficiently, and receiving maximum value for our limited resources. So I'll have questions today on how the per diem costs are calculated, what factors and components go into those costs, and what's included in the administration's expense categories and more. I now want to turn to my co-chairs for this hearing, Deputy Speaker Ayala, followed by Councilmember Brewer, for their opening statements.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. And good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's hearing. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. Thank you to my co-chairs, Councilmembers Brennan and Councilmember Brewer, for joining me and chairing this hearing today. Today, we are here to discuss the costs incurred and projected costs associated with the city's asylum seeker response efforts. We in the council are the mayoral administration's equal partners in government. In our oversight, we must have a deeper understanding of the costs associated with meeting the needs of asylum seekers who arrive in the city. Yet, throughout this process, we have continually remained in the dark until news hits the administration, that the administration is making yet another poorly thought-out plan to respond to this crisis. This administration has repeatedly stated that it is prioritizing migrant families with children. It is also said that it plans to prioritize families in hotel settings so that DHS can focus on housing families. Yet, last week, Mayor Adams announced that the administration will begin placing migrant families with children in a semi-congregate facility. The administration also announced a few days ago that these families will be provided with a 60-day notice. As I've said before, pushing migrant families out of shelter after 60 days is irresponsible, inhumane, and shortsighted. It will create destabilization in the lives of children already enrolled in school. It will place families in congregate settings that are unsafe, and it can lead to a rapid rise of street homelessness. The administration is also in the process of effectively eliminating the city's longstanding right to shelter. As policies like these are being implemented without any forewarning or consultation of governmental partners, we must shine a light on whether the administration is effectively handling this crisis. Today, we want to gain a deeper understanding of the costs associated with the sheltering asylum seekers. There is no denying that there are significant and growing costs associated with meeting the needs of this population. In fiscal year 2023, the actual city expenditures on asylum seeker response efforts totaled $1.45 billion. In fiscal year 2023, spending in the Department of Social Services, which consists of both DHS and HRA, comprised the largest portion of the city's total spending on the asylum seeker crisis, $764 million, or 52.7%. Historically, DHS has been the city's designated agency to address and prevent homelessness. DHS spending is the best barometer that we have to assess the cost the city is currently spending to shelter asylum seekers. Today, we want to learn how costs for asylum seekers compare between the DHS shelter system and other emergency shelters that have opened up recently. I look forward to hearing from many of these details from the administration today and gather much-needed feedback on the oversight topic. Also, I would like to thank the committee's staff for their work in preparing this hearing. Julia Haramis, Unit Head, Amen Sakilowan, Senior Legislative Counsel, David Romero, Legislative Counsel, and finally, my staff, Elsie Encarnacion, Chief of Staff. I would now like to turn it back over to my co-chair.
Thank you very much. I'm Gail Brewer. I'm Chair of the City Council's Committee on Oversight and Investigations, and I want to thank everyone for being here today. Over the past 18 months, New York City, as you know, has found itself a destination for more than 100,000 asylum seekers fleeing some of the most dysfunctional, war-torn parts of the world. We have always welcomed the world's tired and poor. We know that from the statue in the harbor. And for decades, we have recognized that New York has a duty to make sure everyone in our city has adequate shelter. I believe strongly in that. But the intersection of an unprecedented increase in new arrivals, who for the most part are prohibited from working, although we appreciate anybody, lawyers and others who are helping them to get to work, but with the city's legal responsibility to house the indigent, it has had seismic effects on our budget. We all know that, too. Moreover, the pressures show no sign of relenting. Thousands still arrive every month. The challenges and disruptions abroad that have pushed people to leave their homes to seek safety in America have only grown since spring of last year. For a long time to come, the city will have to help asylum seekers get immediate emergency shelter, as well as long-term employment and housing. Today, the council wants to know how the mayoral administration is calculating those costs and projecting the city's long-term needs to meet these obligations. We want granular detail on just what goes into current per diem costs, as you heard from the Speaker, how it differs across agencies, and whether it is based on actual or projected costs. In prior hearings, we found that the costs that compromise the per diems arise from vendors who charge wildly varying rates for similar work across different agencies, particularly from my experience, under security and fire marshals. We need to make sure that we're getting the best service for the best price and ensure that we don't spend carelessly just because caring for asylum seekers presents new and changing policy challenges. We had some of these discussions when we had our hearing on September 21st. I'd like to thank the following people for all their hard work: Oversight and Investigations Committee staff, Legislative Counsel Nicole Kata, and Policy Analyst Alex Yablón, and the Oversight and Investigations Division Staff Director Aaron Mendelson, Deputy Director Meg Powers, Council Kevin Frick, Lead Investigator Zachary Mayer, Investigator Kerry Katie Sinis, and Legislative Fellow Amisa Ratliff, and from my staff, Sam Goldsmith, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. We're now going to turn it over to our public advocate, Jermaine Williams, for his opening statement.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, my name is Jermaine Williams, Public Advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Madam Speaker, Chair Brennan, Chair Ayala, Chair Brewer, and members of the Committees on Finance, General Welfare, and Oversight and Investigation for holding this hearing. New York City is now in the second year of responding to the influx of migrants and asylum seekers since the first bus arrived in Port Authority in August 2022. According to the most recent figures from the administration, over 120,000 migrants have arrived and come into the city's care. Thousands have moved on to other municipalities, and over 64,000 remain. It is estimated that the city anticipates 10,000 new arrivals per month, and that number does seem daunting. Historically, however, the city has welcomed even greater numbers of immigrants as they have come through and were processed at Ellis Island. Back then, to be fair, there was less infrastructure and systems in place to handle such an influx. We had overcrowding in housing. Yet, I must say, our city is a better city because of immigrants who made it during that time. The administration originally cited an approximate $4 billion would be spent in fiscal year 2024 on asylum seeker response, which has grown to a projected $12 billion through the end of fiscal year 2025. Placing the onus of budget cuts on migrants as to why citywide services may stagnate is disingenuous on agencies such as NYPD, which has the city's largest overtime budget, routinely doubles or triples its allotment. In fiscal year 2022, overtime spending totaled $670 million through the allotted OT budget was roughly, although the allotted OT budget was roughly $354 million. The city provided third-party vendors with contracts, even though these providers lack experience and have documented histories of complaints, including most recently grievances for migrants as discussed at prior hearing in September. Migrants are not to be scapegoated in this conversation and discussion. The owners should be on the city to provide increased oversight over any excess spending across the board. Also, having a across-the-board cut doesn't make any sense either. I'm hoping that the city and the administration will join us when we ask for revenue-raising options in the state they have previously consistently argued against it. That includes the mayor. At the end of the day, New York City will not turn its back on immigrants, and we see this every day through the continued mutual aid and advocacy efforts of New Yorkers, to welcome our newest neighbors. At this juncture, it is imperative that the city is intentional with the funding allocated to asylum seeker response and that it leads to a net positive outcomes. I also hope the city and the mayor will support us when we're trying to stop the evictions that are occurring and support the eviction prevention bills that are going on in the city that will help with housing as well. One very important component to this is the bolstering of legal immigration services for migrants. The city's asylum application help center filed a reported 5,600 asylum application, 300 temporary protected status, TPS applications. As people get on their feet and are able to secure work, they would then be able to move out of the city's shelter system and contribute to our city's economy, as always been the history of the New York City. Such processes are vital in the development of response systems that moves away from emergency mode to sustainability in the long run, especially when discussing the fiscal future of our city. There have always been ebbs and flows in migration in our country and our city, and this should be the start of a plan designed and equipped to anticipate such fluctuations. That said, our city still requires ample support from our state and federal partners in alleviating pressures from all sides. Just as our city has developed a response, we expect the same from our state and federal partners. I continue to ask for increased support and funding from DC and Albany and New York City. For my trips to Washington DC this past year alone, I understand what is possible with support from our federal partners. I acknowledge and celebrate wins simultaneously. I know there is more to be done. Lastly, I would just ask the administration to not pit communities against each other. There is a lot of Black and Brown communities who have been trying to get support from government for a very long time, and I can understand their anger. We want to make sure the anger is not directed to asylum seekers who are trying to do their best, but directed at the governments who have failed them. So we should use language that does not scapegoat people who are seeking services and not have people who have little fighting people who have less. There is a way that we can do that. I look forward to your support both on eviction prevention, and I assume we will have support for raising revenue, since we all see how important it is to have a whole budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Public Advocate. Okay, we've also been joined by Councilmembers Farias, Joseph, Riley, Carr, Hank, Sanchez, Juan, and Caban. Before I turn it over to Committee Counsel, I have to thank the finance staff who work so hard behind the scenes to make these hearings happen, Deputy Chief of Staff Tanisha Edwards, Finance Director Richard Lee, Managing Director Jonathan Rosenberg, Unit Head Julia Haramis, Finance Analyst Michael Sherman, and Owen Kautowski, Committee Counsel Mike Toomey, my Senior Advisor John Yetton, and all the staff from General Welfare and Oversight for their hard work in putting this together. I'm now going to turn it over to Committee Counsel Mike Toomey to swear everyone in, and we can get started.
Good morning. If you raise your hands, please. Do you affirm that your testimony will be truthful to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief, and that you will respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Director Schaefer? Commissioner Park? Commissioner Iskull? Dr. Long? Deputy Commissioner Sarkisian? Director Chmowitz? Director Greenberg? Thank you. You may begin.
Good morning, Speaker Adams, Public Advocate Williams, Chairs Brennan, Brewer, and Ayala, and members of the Finance, Oversight, and Investigations and General Welfare Committees. I am Molly Schaefer, the Interim Director of the New York City Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. My colleagues and I are happy to be here before you to discuss the surge of asylum seekers arriving in New York City and the fiscal impact on the city's budget. Joining me at today's hearing is Molly Wasso Park, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Social Services, Zach Iskull, Commissioner at New York City Emergency Management, from the Office of Management and Budget, our David Greenberg, Deputy Director, and Michael Chmowitz, Associate Director, Dr. Ted Long, Senior Vice President at New York City Health and Hospitals, and George Sarkisian, Chief of Staff at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, join me as well. New York City will always be a city that welcomes immigrants. The Statue of Liberty continues to be a beacon of hope for all new arrivals, both foreign and domestic, and we are proud of that. Our city knows the positive and long-lasting impact immigrants can have on our city and country. Since April 2022, our city has led a humanitarian response that has sheltered, fed, and provided essential services to over 130,000 asylum seekers who have come through our intake system. However, with over 65,000 currently in our care and nearly 4,000 new arrivals entering our system each week, the city is over capacity. To be clear, the city is at a point where we don't have the capacity to house all the newly arriving asylum seekers or provide the level of care that asylum seekers or 54,000 longtime New Yorkers in our care deserve. We've been consistent in saying we need more support from other levels of government. While we appreciate the resources that we have received so far, more resources are needed to try and sustain an unsustainable national crisis. The city has pulled every lever of city government to address and support asylum seekers, rapidly responding on a large scale to support households. To put that into context, we've opened 213 emergency sites, including our Arrival Center and 16 large humanitarian relief centers. We've helped process over 6,000 federal asylum applications. We've provided clothes for families with children. We've provided diapers, formulas, baby wipes. We've provided medical services. We've provided education, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. I'm not saying we have done too much, but we are saying we cannot sustain this level of service. This administration has led this humanitarian crisis with compassion and an open heart, but the city doesn't have unlimited resources to fund this emergency crisis. All of these services have a significant cost associated with them, and the cost of goods and services is the highest that it's been in years. As public servants, it is our fiduciary responsibility to use public funds to meet the needs of this city. As we have consistently said, if we do not receive additional funding, we will eventually have to reduce or cut the services that millions of New Yorkers rely on. On September 9, Mayor Adams announced that the city would have to take several steps to stabilize the city's finances because of the significantly higher cost of the asylum seeker humanitarian crisis and due to the limited financial support from other levels of government. To put that into context, before Title 42 expired in early May of 2022, the city had over 35,000 asylum seekers in our care and 115 sites citywide. As of October 15, just six months later, we now have over 65,000 asylum seekers in our care and increased the total number of emergency sites to a staggering 213. In other words, in the span of six months, the population doubled, forcing us to open dozens of emergency sites and increase spending. Since April 2022, our city has spent over $2 billion in this emergency. If we continue to spend funds at this rate, then we are tracking to spend upwards of $12 billion over the next three fiscal years. Our city has taken urgent action to support asylum seekers, ensuring families with children have not been forced to sleep on the street. As city leaders, we have utilized every tool in our toolbox to rapidly meet the need, including emergency contracting and procurement, in some instances, opening facilities overnight to respond to that day's arrivals. Using these tools, we have opened emergency shelters in all five boroughs, serving families with children, single adults, and adult families. Despite our best efforts, the city doesn't control the front door at the border, and we can't continue to solve a national crisis at the local level. Asylum seekers are arriving in our city via differing modes of transportation. Our committed city staff, along with our contracted vendors, immediately act whenever the buses arrive and provide health screenings, meals, and compassionately engage with asylum seekers who are suffering trauma after an intense and arduous journey in search of the American dream. Every day, our teams meet and work around the clock to prepare, discuss operational logistics, and ensure we are providing a safe environment for asylum seekers. In addition to the thoughtful leaders next to me, there are thousands of public servants, some of whom have their own immigrant journeys, committed to supporting and helping asylum seekers as they take the next step in their journey. They are the real heroes, and we all owe them a huge debt of gratitude. The city's response to the asylum seeker issue is not only a whole-of-government effort, it's a whole-city response. However, we can't continue to do this alone, and you are seeing other municipal governments across the country sound that alarm that we've been raising for months. We thank our many partners, community-based organizations, contracted vendors, and others for moving at a quick speed to help this city, our city, respond to this unprecedented humanitarian crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and we're now available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Molly. I'm now going to hand it over to Speaker Adams for her questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Welcome once again to everyone testifying here today. The impetus for holding this hearing is for the council to gain a better understanding of how the administration determines the budgeted costs for providing shelter and services to asylum seekers. The adopted plan included $2.9 billion budgeted for fiscal year 2024 and $1 billion in fiscal year 2025 for the costs related to asylum seeker response efforts. In August, the administration presented adjusted cost projections, which totaled $4.7 billion in fiscal year 2024 and $6.1 billion in fiscal year 2025. Given that these adjustments were made over two months ago, and the release of the November plan is only weeks away, should we expect to see further adjustments to the projected costs? costs?
Thank you for your question, Speaker. We are monitoring the census trends daily against our August projection, and we may adjust the forecast if we see a systematic deviation from that projection.
Can you get a little bit more granular with us? What would the driving changes, or what would be driving the changes specifically from the cost estimates?
I'm happy to go over the changes that we made for that August forecast and give a little context, because there are important dynamics going on that really changed the situation that we're seeing across all systems. And so in the adopted budget, we were forecasting that the population in our care would grow by 40 households per day, and that was based on the trend that we were seeing in our care over the medium to long term. Since the expiration of Title 42 in May of 2023, we have seen a systematic acceleration in that trend. So we went from 40 households per day that we were growing in the long run to, in July of 2023, to 98 households per day. So it was a substantial acceleration daily of the number of households in our care. And so when we had seen this sustained acceleration, it became very clear that we needed to update these numbers because the situation on the ground had clearly changed. And so when we looked at this, we wanted to be careful with potentially overreading too much on near-term trends, because as we know, the situation can be very volatile month to month. And so we looked at a balance between that long-run rate of 40 households per day and that short-term acceleration in July of 98 households per day. And that gave us a midpoint of that range of 69 more households per day each day. That's the average of those two numbers. And then the finalized forecast, we were targeting a 20% reduction of that midpoint, down from 69 to 55 households per day. And so it is at the low end of the historical range, but not at the lowest end. And so we were sort of taking a balance of that acceleration that we saw in July, as well as the long-run average of 40 households per day, and estimating 55 additional households per day. And so we continued that trend going forward, and we cost out the cost burden to the city of paying for that additional census growth over the year.
Okay, thank you. The influx of asylum seekers to New York City, which began in earnest nearly 18 months ago, we all know, has strained the city's resources, and I fully comprehend how challenging this situation has been. In April of last year, it would have been nearly impossible to anticipate the actual breadth and depth of the crisis. I appreciate that this truly was an unforeseen event. The fact that this was an emergency situation that necessitated extreme actions cannot be denied. The utilization of emergency contracting was likely necessary. I'm particularly interested, though, in how emergency contracting has impacted the costs of the asylum seeker response efforts, as it is assumed that emergency contracts generally tend to cost more than had those contracts been awarded in a typical manner. We do know from the previous hearing that many of the emergency contracts were competitively bid and that some contracts used for response efforts are not emergency contracts. Currently, how many contracts related to asylum seeker response efforts are emergency contracts versus regular contracts, and what is the total contract value for each?
Thank you, Speaker. So to build off of the comments that you made, yes, this has been a very rapidly changing landscape on the ground. One of the things that we have done is that I think every agency here has tapped into the requirements contracts that the city has competitively bid to be in place for, to respond to emergencies. I know the Department of Homeless Services, for example, tapped into that to staff some of the shelters early on in the process. Those contracts are not, as you note, not emergency contracts. But they are there to respond to emergencies. They are expensive. So each of us, each of the different agencies represented here, has taken a different approach to trying to manage down, in some cases, this was the Department of Homeless Services approach. We pivoted away from those contracts or using different vendors, but my colleagues, and they can speak to themselves, have taken different approaches, all with the end goal of getting to more cost-effective responses to managing to the crisis. The bottom line is that we have been adapting to this very rapidly changing landscape. You know, it certainly, as you note, not something we could have predicted 18 months ago, but even frankly, the move from 2,000 or so individuals a week to 4,000 individuals a week, which is something that's happened just over the last few weeks, was again something that we had to adapt to. So being able to tap into those emergency structures has been incredibly helpful, but we are all really cognizant of the fact that it is incumbent on us to manage the city's finances responsibly, so we're all taking steps to pivot the approach and get to more cost-effective approaches. With respect to the detailed numbers that you're looking for, we can follow up with you. I think we don't have that precise breakdown on hand.
So we don't know the number of emergency contracts versus regular contracts?
It is a more nuanced answer, just because, again, I can speak most directly to the Department of Homeless Services. We have well over 150 emergency sites. Some of them were procured through emergency contracts, some of them not. Even those that are emergencies were competitively procured. My colleagues also have a high volume, so we will circle back with a listing of the contracts and the procurement methodology that was used.
I appreciate that. Since the beginning of the emergency, though, do we know the percentage of which emergency contracts have been competitively bid versus not competitively bid?
I don't have that at my fingertips, but we will circle back with that number.
Are these figures that are typically kept somewhere, or are you going to have to configure them and then get them back to the council?
It's a question of configuring them, working with the mayor's office of contract services to make sure that we are giving the appropriate number.
So this is not an ongoing calculation for you?
No.
Do you intend for this to be an ongoing calculation for you?
Because what it means to be an emergency contract, in some cases, it means shortcutting pieces of the procurement process; in other cases, it's a fully competitively procured process, but we are skipping steps like the hearing, right? There's a variety of different methodologies that fall under the rubric of emergency contract, and then, as noted, some of the contracts that we use to respond to emergency are actually citywide requirements contracts. So what we are measuring ourselves towards is, are we serving the individuals in need of service, and how are we doing managing costs efficiently? There's a variety of different ways that we can do to get there, and I think, so we're focused on those outcome metrics rather than the specific procedural pieces.
This is very interesting. Generally, though, what are the guidelines for the city's need to use or cease using emergency contracting?
Thank you, Speaker. So I think there's just a little bit of confusion here in terms of what is sort of the definition of emergency procurement. To the extent possible, all of us really try and avoid using the emergency procurement process. For our agency, the vast majority of the contracts, we hold 16 contracts, only four are emergency procurements at this point in time. But I think for all of us, we try and use different processes to find either requirements contracts, contracts that might have been competitively bid that are held by other agencies that we can use to try and avoid the emergency procurement. And then there is, what has also been happening is the sunsetting of emergency contracts, where we then, once, you know, we use them initially, we then move to competitively bid processes to displace those contracts with something that might be more cost-effective down the line. And I think that it's very easy for us to provide all of that information to you. We can circle back with it. There are a lot of contracts that we're all holding, but we can certainly give you that list and show you which ones are emergency procurements, which ones were competitively bid through a sealed process or through an RFP process, or whatever that might have been a citywide requirements contract. That information should be pretty easy to provide, but we'd be here all day if we were going through the list of contracts.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. It's interesting, and I know Chair Brewer will probably get a little more deeper into this, but the fact that you all actually do take a look at the emergency contracts and then turn them over to being non-emergency, to making it a non-emergency contract situation is important. Okay. Barring any major changes at the federal level, it appears that the current situation is definitely the new normal for us. We all have to admit that and get used to it, and the city will continue to shoulder the responsibility of providing services to asylum seekers for the near future. Given the passage of time, though, do you feel that it is appropriate to consider ending the use of emergency contracts for the provision of these services? And does the administration have a plan for moving away from utilizing emergency contracts for these services?
Let me start, and my colleagues will jump in. Thank you. Absolutely, we are all looking for ways that we can get to stable, predictable, longer-term ways of approaching this. I think we share that goal, and we share the assessment that this is our new normal. That looks a little bit different depending on which agency that you're talking about. So to speak for the Department of Homeless Services, for example, we put an RFP out early on in this process, right? So we are working with a host of not-for-profit vendors to operate sites. All of those were competitively procured. We initially did very short-term contracts in response to the emergency. We are transitioning those to moderately longer-term contracts now, and we'll adjust going forward. We're also doing some longer-term, we're breaking out that initial RFP. We're adding some RFPs so that we are transitioning again to longer-term contracts and breaking out the approach to that so that we have clearer procurement methodology for different pieces of our response. And my colleagues can jump in and speak to how they are doing, I think, but the bottom line is, yes, we are transitioning to longer-term approaches to this. But I did want to sort of come back to reiterate that even in the places where we were doing, where we did have very rapid emergency response, in a lot of cases, that was a competitive procurement, and that we, wherever possible, adhered to the bones of the city procurement structure so that we were making sure that we were getting efficient bids.
Hi. So what I wanted to do is break down a little bit of how we approached emergency contracts versus more long-term steady-state contracts at H&amp;H since we started the first humanitarian centers. So I just want to actually, I wrote down one of the things you said, Speaker, which really resonated with me. How do we go from emergency spending to long-term planning? And what we've done at H&amp;H is, when we first started, we ran our humanitarian centers like hospitals. We laid out all of the different services, medical, security, laundry, food, the actual hotel itself, and we had an H&amp;H staff member, which is still true today, that's there 24/7 administrator or supervisor, that all of those services that are provided by vendors report up to. So we, H&amp;H, a mission-driven organization, are in charge of all of our sites. What we did is, to the extent that we could for emergency contracts, is we tried to use contracts that already existed within our H&amp;H system when we started our humanitarian centers. For example, Sedexo provided laundry services, which was procured competitively through an RFP at H&amp;H in the past. So we based our Sedexo contract on the terms that were obtained through the competitively bid RFP selection of Sedexo in the past. Similar with Aero Security, that's the same security company that provides security at our hospitals and our clinics. So we started with Aero Security at our sites as well. The most important thing we're doing now, though, is exactly what you said, which is going from the pace where we needed to move at emergency speed, and we need to open these sites very, very quickly, to what long-term planning looks like, and we're using the gold standard, which is putting everything out to RFP. Specifically, we've put out four RFPs now in even this last couple of months. So we put out RFPs for food, laundry, security, and project management. And we're going to be putting all of the services, again, as you break down our sites, our sites are constituted by the various services that all report up to H&amp;H. Each of those service lines is going to be put out to RFP, because we believe in RFP as the gold standard for getting the best possible competitively obtained price. So that's our plan going forward to achieve what you said, which is our long-term planning to the greatest extent that we can.
So Dr. Long, thank you for that. That's very helpful. So in reassessing the hospital template, I'll just say that, that you laid out for these facilities, we are now going to be backtracking, going to RFP, and the mission, among other things, will be to lower the costs? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If... Okay, sorry. I'm going to move on to the per diem information. Over the last 18 months, as the population of asylum seekers the city is serving has increased, per diem costs have increased. In the most recent term and condition report on the asylum seeker response efforts, the administration reported the per diem cost as of the end of September was $394, an increase from the per diem cost of $383 presented in the August report, and the $363 per diem cost, OMB, provided in January. Intuitively, one would think that as the population served grew, the city could gain the benefits of economies of scale. Thus, we would expect the per diem cost to trend lower rather than higher. Why does it seem the city is not achieving economies of scale as it serves more people?
Thank you for your question. I can go into this. So there are, when we think about this, kind of two major countervailing forces that are really driving the per diem changes that we're seeing. So the first is the cost efficiencies that we are working with on the agencies to reduce the per diem. So we're constantly working on finding the model to find out ways that we can reduce the per diem. But the other countervailing force that's right now is actually putting upward pressure on the per diem is the fact, it's sort of just the foundational rule in economics, that when you increase demand in a supply-constrained environment, prices increase. And so as we have seen the census continue to increase from, you know, 30,000 before Title 42 expired to 65,000 today, it is putting enormous pressure on us to find sites in a very supply-constrained environment, and that is raising the price. And one thing that is affecting that recently in particular is that it's not just that the demand is increasing, but it's increasing at an accelerating pace, right? So the population is growing over time, right? We saw that all the way back at the executive budget when we said the long-run trend was 40 more households per day, but then we saw in July that it actually increased to the 98 households per day that I mentioned earlier. So it's not just that there needs to be more sites that are found at any given point in time, but the rapidity with which we need to find the sites is actually accelerating, and that's putting upward pressure on the per diem, because we're sort of putting, you know, tremendous demand pressure on a supply-constrained environment, and so prices are increasing. And so of those two countervailing forces, the per diem is increasing because of that demand pressure.
What's the projected per diem cost the administration's anticipating for the remainder of fiscal year 2024, and then we want to know 2025 as well?
Got it. So in the most recent projections from August, we were basing the per diem on the cumulative per diem to date, so that was the 383, and we carry that forward over the next two fiscal years. As you noted, we have seen changes in that per diem, and we're monitoring that very closely, but we don't, in our modeling, overreact to short-term changes in the per diem, because we want to take sort of a longer-term view. And so that's an incredibly important parameter for us to monitor in the model, but in both, in the August forecast update, the cumulative per diem to date was 383, and we made the assumption that those two countervailing forces, the demand pressure, as well as the cost efficiencies that we're working to find at each site, would stabilize the per diem at that level.
And you feel that's realistic?
It's very challenging to forecast in an environment where there's really no precedence for this, right? So before this emergency, right, there were approximately 45,000 individuals in the DHS system, and now we're in an environment where there's no real historical data that we have that says what is an average per diem when you're serving 120,000 approximately individuals across all of these systems, right? And so as an economist and an empiricist who goes to the data, right, the richness of the forecast is built on the depth of history you have in the data, right? But when you're forecasting across a kind of dynamics that you've never seen before, then you need to make judgments without necessarily having that rich data that says, we've been in this situation before, this is what was achieved, because as the census continues to increase, what we're seeing is that the population in care is higher than it was in any, you know, week or month previously.
Given your expertise, that 383, are you comfortable staying with the 383?
We are continually monitoring it based on actual and estimated spending to date, and if we see systematic deviations in it, now we think comprehensively, right? So we don't just change the modeling based on per diem. So we don't just change the modeling based on per diem, we have to think about census as well, inflows and outflows. And so over time, we make sure we have this sort of comprehensive holistic view of all the dynamics that are happening in the system. And if we see a systematic deviation, then that will need to be reflected in upcoming forecasts.
Okay. I'm going to take that as a maybe. The administration has issued a number of policy changes in an attempt to staunch the growth of the cost of the asylum seeker response. We would like to get a better understanding of the changes instituted, their implications for individuals, and how they could reduce future costs. Can you provide the committees with the details of all policy changes for asylum seekers related to time limits and the provision of services that have been implemented since the budget was adopted?
Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to get started, and my colleagues are going to jump in. As you note, there have been a lot of policy changes. This has been an incredibly rapidly evolving situation, and while all of us have expertise in serving an aspect of this crisis, none of us are experts in essentially running a refugee system, right, which is, which is what we are doing. None of us are immigration experts. So we have had to adapt and learn and change as the situation on the ground changes and as we learn more about what is and isn't effective. So just to talk a little bit about some of the changes that we've made, starting with the Department of Homelessness Services System and the Department of Social Services, and then my colleagues will jump in. We have significantly expanded our provider base, and I'm thinking about who we are working with. You know, when this started, we put out a call to our normal providers, that's what we do, and many of them stepped up. They are providing terrific services. But we also learned really quickly that we had tapped out our normal providers. They were serving other clients, they were strained as organizations. So we're working with a host of new organizations, including groups that hadn't worked in the city before. You know, honestly, I think this is a little bit of a silver lining for us because it's, we are building the not-for-profit base that is, that can work with low-income New Yorkers. We are working with the National Guard. Honestly, if you'd told me a year and change ago that I would be thrilled to have the National Guard running shelters, I would have told you you were crazy, but they have been a terrific partner. We are very grateful for the state's support there, and the servicemen and women are doing a wonderful job on the ground day to day. I think as Deputy Speaker Ayala referenced, we have really been prioritizing hotels for families with children. So the Department of Homeless Services was using a large number of hotels for both single adults and families with children. Over the last few months, we have been shifting the single adults to congregate settings so that we can ensure that the private spaces could be used for families with children. That's a reflection of all of the capacity constraints that have come up in earlier conversations, really wanting to make sure that when we have these, you know, high level of demand and very scarce resources that we are allocating appropriately. I think our approach to intake is a place where you've seen a number of different changes. Early on in the crisis, asylum seekers were going to the DHS intake facility for the appropriate population, right? So to PATH, to 30th Street. We then, we, Department of Social Services, thought that we would stand up our own intake site that was specifically for asylum seekers. We put the wheels there into motion. But at the same time, as the scope of the crisis was growing and we gained better understanding as a city as to what we were facing, we were moving from this being a DHS response to really a whole-of-government response. So we paused the DHS intake center, and what was done instead was to create a citywide arrival center, which my colleague, Dr. Long, can speak to better than I can, but really it's a centralized intake for the system as a whole. You know, then there is smaller things on the ground. Our language access approach has had to be really different. Traditionally, we've used largely language line, but we brought in many more in-person interpreters. We've also had to adapt and translate documents into languages that were not common for us. Wolu, for example, is something that we're seeing a lot of from West Africa that was not traditionally part of our shelters. So, you know, every day, we are making operational and policy decisions to try and adapt and manage the system better. Sometimes, you know, I certainly can appreciate from the outside that it seems like a lot of change, but it is really us trying to adapt to changing circumstances and circumstances for which we don't necessarily have deep expertise as immigration efforts. But my colleagues have also made changes, so I'm going to pause and pass it off.
Yeah, I'm happy to go next. So, and just to make sure we're tracking your questions, your first was around policies, and the second was around provision of services. So, excuse me. I'll talk a little bit about provision of services first. So as Commissioner Park said, one of, I think, the most important things that we've done to streamline services is open the Arrival Center. When we first opened our humanitarian centers, we were doing vaccines onsite, we had urgent care services onsite as well. We had vaccines onsite because we wanted to enroll children in school as fast as possible. We didn't want to miss a single second, neither did their families. Enrolling children in school is one of the most important things that we've done. But over time, we've realized that the best way to offer the vaccine is when you first enter our collective front door, which is at the Arrival Center. So the success of that is at our humanitarian centers and our Arrival Center, we've now administered more than 40,000 vaccines to date. That's 40,000 not only diseases prevented, but thousands of children that are in school because of that effort. On the urgent care side, we also have learned a lot, too. Initially, asylum seekers had a tremendous amount of need. I've seen some horrific things, my team has seen some horrific things as well. We've had a child that had a witness seizure in front of us, on the ground, almost died. We had a woman just two weeks ago that we gave her first prenatal visit to at being nine months pregnant, which is unacceptable. Health care is a human right, and the fact that those, that child had his medication taken away by ICE, and that woman didn't get any care in Texas is a violation of their rights, in my opinion. But moving forward, what we've sought to do to be able to address that in the best way is, instead of offering urgent care to all of our sites, let's use telehealth through H&amp;H, and let's get them plugged into primary care so they could see me as their doctor, and they can develop a relationship with me that can last for the rest of their life. The success of that, in terms of, again, streamlining and providing services using our already-existing healthcare system, is we've now had more than 29,000 visits among asylum seekers at health and hospitals alone. It's 29,000 opportunities to talk about the traumatic journey they've been through, to get them the care that they need, and to plug them into regular care so they aren't reliant on care at our sites, but are getting care the same way that you or I would. For provision of services, too, I did just want to take a second, if I may, add on to your question a little bit, and talk about forward-looking. What have we not done that we want to do going forward that we are, that we believe will lower cost overall? And a key component of that is case management. So when I go and talk to asylum seekers and I ask them what they need in order to take the next step forward in their journey is, and my team and I do this on a regular basis, number one thing, of course, is everybody wants to work, but others want to resettle in different communities, maybe less expensive communities. Other want certain trainings or need ID to get that job that they want, so OSHA training, ID NYC, things like that. Others want to go to a different place. They've tried out New York City, they have a brother in Chicago they want to go to, so they want to be re-ticketed, but are a little, don't exactly know how to approach that. Case management is the glue that enables us to do everything I just said, which we've started to in different ways, both comprehensively bring all of that together when we launched this large case management program we're calling our Red, Yellow, Green Program in early November. Right now, we're finishing an assessment survey where we're asking the same questions of every asylum seeker in every part of our system. But knowing who needs help with work authorization, who is interested in resettling upstate, who wants to be re-ticketed to Chicago, having that information so that we can power our case managers to have targeted interventions to every asylum seeker in our system, because not only will we have statistics on who generally wants those types of services, that type of help, it's more than the statistic, we'll know where they are, we'll know what their phone number is, we'll know, we'll be able to, when they come into the building every day, when they scan their QR code, follow up with them about the plan they started with us. So all of those things, forward-looking, I think represent an important direction at this stage of the crisis. How can we help people to give them the specific services and address what they need in order to take the next step forward? And I'll just finally say, I'm convinced this is going to work, because I believe it already has started to work. So we've helped more than 130,000 asylum seekers in New York City to date. Just look at that number compared to what any other city in the country has done. We've helped the lion's share of people get back on their feet. Of that 130,000 is so critical to remember, that because of our New York City help, half of them, half, have left our city system and began, and started the better life that they came here for. Let's get that number even higher, but I know it can work because it's worked already, and case management is the glue that will enable us to use all the strategies that we need to use moving forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Long, and as I have in the past, commend you on your work, which is outstanding. We really want to dig, though, into recent, you know, into recent changes as it pertains to the adopted budget. So that's really what we want to get back to, the, any changes in policy that have been implemented since the budget was adopted.
Thank you for your question, Speaker. I think one of the policy items that you mentioned was our time limits. As we've said before, more than 130,000 migrants have come through our care since last spring. We have more than 119,000 people currently in our care, including long-term unhoused New Yorkers. And in recent weeks, we've been seeing migrants arriving more and more quickly. We started with 2,000 a week, just a couple of weeks ago, and now we're at 4,000, or nearly 4,000. And so we really did shift to time limits to make sure that we can support everybody who's coming in, and we've paired it with intensive casework support, and we're seeing that initially it's working. Many asylum seekers are moving in with families and friends or finding other places to stay instead of returning to the Arrival Center. At this point, we know it's less than half of the population who have reached their 61st day is still with us. And we're going to continue to use the successful model to help those with other options take advantage of them, and it really gives our teams a time limit to help those individuals.
So you see the time limits as being successful thus far?
It's early, it's early days. So far, they have been successful.
Can you confirm that no shelter time limits apply to asylum seekers in DHS?
We are not implementing, at this time, the families with children time limit. We will be working to roll out the single adult. Only a very small fraction of the single adults are in the DHS system.
So is that, does that mean that you are considering time limit rules for asylum seekers at DHS, or no?
For adults, yes.
For adults, you are considering, or will that be?
We anticipate that in the next several weeks, we will be rolling out the time, the 30-day notice for adults in the DHS system, with the understanding that we will work with individuals who still need assistance at the end of 30 days.
Okay, thank you. I'll let my colleagues ask you further on that. The September 9, 2023 PEG letter said that the city must reduce the costs associated with caring for asylum seekers as the current and projected levels of spending are unsustainable. The letter went on to say that the city would be reducing services being provided to asylum seekers and closely monitoring those services to ensure that they are being delivered in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible. What services do asylum seekers have or will be reduced to generate this saving?
I'll just mention, we're working across each agency to really take a look at our operational costs and figure out how to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. We've already identified a lot of savings across the systems, but I'll let each of my colleagues go into more on that.
Can you, can you name the agencies as we get in? Thank you.
Ted from Health and Hospitals.
Yes, sir.
So actually, I'll just give the first example of the medical services and how we've changed them and the rationale forward over time. So when we first opened our first humanitarian center, which was a little over a year ago, the Row Hotel, we were offering vaccines onsite and urgent care onsite. Fast forward to today, we're offering vaccines upstream at the Arrival Center, so it's the first thing that happens to you. And for urgent care and primary care, we've successfully, again, helped for people to have 29,000 visits in our health and hospital system, in addition to setting up our sites with urgent care, which is a 24/7 service called Virtual Express Care. We set it up during COVID. It's very successful. But it's something through our system that we have anyways, and we've attempted to enroll as many people as we could in health insurance. So actually, those services can be billed to the health insurance provider as opposed to being provided by the city.
Are the, Dr. Long, are the RFPs that you mentioned before, would they be included in this cost savings, be it revisiting the contracts, Sedesco, and in others?
So I can confirm right now that a key purpose of doing the RFPs is to have cost savings. It's the gold standard, as you know, the best way to achieve the best competitive pricing for vendors that provide these specific and designated services. In terms of how that might factor into the overall model for cost savings, I have to defer to my colleagues at OMB.
So the way that we monitor costs is by taking a holistic view of estimated costs that the agencies give us on a monthly basis, because what we need to do is to think holistically about those two dynamics I was talking about earlier, both the pressure that opening up new sites can put on the price that we're paying, but as well as all these changes that we're seeing that can reduce costs. And so we update the per diem based on estimated costs going forward, and so our model will naturally embed any of these changes into future iterations.
Thank you. On the other side of that, I'm sorry, Dr. School, okay. On the other side of that, we're speaking about policy changes and numbers. Are we configuring also the impact on the individuals that these changes will or have already made? And how are we doing it, doing that? How are we looking at that?
Yes, thank you, absolutely. At the end of the day, our core mission is to provide services. Our absolute goal is to make sure that families and individuals are able to integrate into New York City. So, you know, although we are going very carefully at looking for ways that we can save resources, we've also been looking at ways that we can invest in what we think is most critical to helping households transition to life in the United States. So, for example, we've continued to invest in the asylum seeker application work. We collaborated with the federal government on standing up what, they did a pilot clinic on helping people apply for work authorization, right? So that spending has occurred because we know that it is really important that we help people take that next step. As Dr. Long referenced, you know, looking at the different ways of providing medical service is not to deny people medical services, but are there ways that we can do things more efficiently? So coming back to that core value statement of we want to make sure that people are able to transition to life in the United States is always something that we are keeping in mind.
And just to add on to that briefly, I think, you know, it's important, as Commissioner Park was saying, to take a step back, which your question gets at, and what is our mission here? Why are we doing this work that we view as incredibly important? And it's not, in our words, it's in the words of asylum seekers, it's so that they can start a better life with their families here in the United States of America. So one of the things we look closely at, which is a metric that, you know, over time, especially as we start a case management program, we'd love to share more with you about, is how successful have we been in helping people to get what they want, to leave our system and start a better life either in New York City or in another place in our country? So that's something we're going to have a laser focus on going forward. On the medical care side, too, I think, you know, how do we judge the effect on an individual? I think every individual that's plugged into longitudinal primary care, we've seen asylum seekers at my practice at Morrisonia in the South Bronx, where I am, as you know, every Friday, I think that makes an incredible difference in their lives, and I think it makes an incredible difference in the lives of the children that have been through this intense trauma to get here to New York City. So I think every time we successfully enroll a family and children into medical care that they can keep for the rest of their life, which is their human right, I think that is a big success and victory, and that's something I want to see us do a lot more of.
I agree with you, Dr. Long, wholeheartedly. Along those same lines, this is a concern of mine, and I know that it is a concern of the Deputy Speaker as well, and I'm sure that she's going to get even deeper into this. When we're taking a look at the limits of time now, we're taking a limit, a look at the impact on families with children, and specifically what's being done to prevent negative impacts on families with children, what's being done to ensure the stability for children, and to specifically ensure that they're able to maintain a consistent school placement, other placement, health concerns, and everything else that comes with, the trauma that these children have already gone through, and now putting a term limit on their stay in the shelters?
So we take the safety, security, the health of families with children incredibly as our sort of north star here. As the mayor repeatedly said, educational journeys will not be interrupted. We're working daily with the Department of Education. As Dr. Ted mentioned, we're making sure that we're front-loading health services to make sure that no child even as we go through these changes will have any negative impact. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Ted about anything else related to health.
Yeah, and I think as people go through transitions, also when they leave our sites and start a new life, maybe in a different borough than the site where they were at, on the healthcare side is our mandate and our high- on the healthcare side is our, is our mandate and our highest priority to keep them connected to the care that we've started with them. So I think it's a little early into, in the process in terms of seeing how we are going to continue to do with that. But I could tell you that my conviction is that we want people that have started to engage in, in primary care and healthcare at New York City Health and Hospitals, for example, to keep that care, and we are in every borough. So we want to make sure that, one of our goals is to make sure, as people are entering our system, if they do move for whatever reason, we keep them connected into care, either in the place where they started their care or in the closest site to where they're now moving to. And we're going to be, that's one of our, I think, key goals for, you know, this, this next period of time, is making sure people stay engaged in care. We have really unique resources at New York City Health and Hospitals that no other cities have. We have two survivors of torture clinics at Bellevue and the Libertas Clinic at Elmhurst. So we have a ton of things that we can do to uniquely help asylum seekers. And it is our, again, it is our mission at Health and Hospitals to help everybody without exception and to keep them in our care once they start.
Thank you very much. I have another question, but I know the Deputy Speaker probably has that question already in her arsenal of questions. I'm going to stick to policy. I'm going to go back to policy. We talked about the policy changes and the implementation. We, we know that it's very new right now. Do we have any actual figures at this time of actual savings that the city has realized at this time?
We do not. We are monitoring the trends that we're seeing in the census regularly, and our methodology will pick up any changes in the census, which will then filter through in future updates of the forecast.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to, I guess, my, my final subject matter, at least at this time for me. And that's going to be the TPS status, something that we've all been looking forward to gaining. I was very encouraged by the Biden administration's decision to extend temporary protected status to Venezuelans. This policy change will allow many individuals in the city's care to get expedited work authorizations, permitting them to work legally to support their families as well as to contribute to our local economy. Currently, how many of the asylum seekers residing in the city's care are from Venezuela?
So I can speak to the numbers from Department of Homeless Services. It's about 43% for those currently in shelter.
Anybody else have any figures?
I can mention that, as we said before, 15, more than 15,000 Venezuelans currently are eligible for TPS because came into our shelter system before July 31st. And so that is the, the population we're targeting.
Okay, thank you. And since the announcement, how many of the individuals in the city's care have actually submitted their applications?
So as soon as we got the announcement and, and the Biden administration registered it, we were able, we immediately started scheduling people for, for appointments in our asylum application help center. At this point, we've scheduled more than 600 individuals, and we just opened our first satellite next, last week and plan to get through every single individual by the end of this year.
So currently, we have 600 on the schedule?
At our asylum application help, help clinic.
So, so we don't really have anyone who has actually received the work authorization to date?
Not through TPS, but that's because it just opened up a couple of weeks ago, and it takes the, once we submit the application, it takes the federal government many weeks, two months to adjudicate.
So what is the city doing to prepare for the expected increase of asylum seekers? With work authorization to come, what, what are we doing to take care of the influx? The migrants continue to come. What are we doing as far as planning ahead when it comes to TPS and the work authorization?
So I think just one important note of clarification on TPS. It only applies to Venezuelans who have arrived before July 31st, right? So it's, it's not, that's one of the reasons that it's, you've heard different numbers from the administration. There's a question of how many Venezuelans are in our system, how many Venezuelans arrived in the country before July 31st that would then qualify for TPS, and then there are the issues around the application process. I will say, one of the, one of the greatest sort of whole-of-government efforts that took place was a two-week initiative, not around TPS, but around other work authorizations down on Beaver Street, with the federal government, with INS, with the state, and us. It was only 10 days, two weeks, five business days each week. But we are hoping that the federal government will commit to doing that again with us. And Molly, how many folks went through that site? Was it? 1,700 people went through that site in about 10 business days.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner.
Sorry, if I could just jump in, I want to thank you, Commissioner Scott. I want to clarify that the 43% that I have is people from Venezuela currently in shelter, that, on the DHS side. So that does not filter for the date of entry, so it doesn't necessarily correlate exactly to, to TPS eligibility.
Okay. Thank you both for that clarification. Thank you very much. Are we looking ahead as far as work, workforce development, job training? Are we looking towards doing those types of things, and if so, how are we doing that?
So one of, speaking now from the other side of, of my shop, that on the HRA side, we have extensive career service development programs for, for anybody who is in our systems, people who are receiving cash assistance. So we, we do a lot of work. We have a program called Business Link, where we are having regular career fairs that are marketed towards people who are, whether they are in DHS shelter, receiving cash assistance, other, otherwise interacting with the, the Department of Social Services. So that is a tool that we have, that we can leverage for those who are, are working, who have received work authorization. I think the state has done a lot of work to identify jobs across the state that are available for people with work authorization. You know, but it is, it's going to be, we need to have the, the plans in place, and we have the tools in place where we can communicate broadly. But at the end of the day, there's also, we know we're going to have to be able to work on a retail level with individual households, right? Some people are going to want to do construction work, other cases it's healthcare. Some of these people are coming with actually quite extensive education backgrounds.
I've been saying that quite often.
Right? So, so then it is going to be a question potentially of helping them access whatever licensing that they need to be able to, to do the job for which they're trained here in the United States. That's a little bit different than, than what HRA does on a daily basis, but we will certainly work with our colleagues to be able to meet people where they are.
Commissioner, how successful is the HRA workforce planning right now?
So I don't have current statistics right now because during COVID, much of our workforce development and the, the engagement was, was turned off. We are now in the process, now that the public health emergency is officially over, rolling back out all of the workforce engagement programs that we have to, to all of our participants. But I can tell you that last year was, last fiscal year was a record-breaking year in terms of connecting people on public assistance to jobs through, with organizations that have city contracts, right? That it's a requirement that, that human service providers who have city contracts hire people on public assistance. And last year, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I do know it was a record-breaking year.
Okay, thank you very much. I think I'm going to leave it there, because I know my colleagues really want to jump in here. Before I do, though, I just think it's really, really important, because this is something that's come up throughout my district and I'm sure across the city, Dr. Long, when it comes to vaccinations and, you know, asylum seekers coming through, obtaining vaccinations, children obtaining vaccinations specifically. So I really do want to get this on the record in case it hasn't been on the record or clear on the record as far as what the city stance is when it comes to vaccinations for children going into school.
Healthcare is a human right, and we will provide vaccinations to any children that come to us in New York City Health and Hospitals without exception. Again, I'm really proud that we've provided more than 40,000 vaccines to asylum seekers predominantly among children. That helps all of them not only be in school, but is unacceptable, in my medical opinion, to have a child get measles nowadays when we have effective vaccines that could save their lives and prevent an outbreak from occurring in the first place. They are not getting this life-saving care in Texas. They are going right through Texas without missing the opportunity to receive their human right of a vaccine that could save their lives or prevent an outbreak when, when whatever city they're going to. We are in New York City doing the right thing, but just to be clear and agree with your point, we are picking up the tab from Texas. We are doing things that could be done in Texas and would be better be done in Texas because they have more protection by the time they get here. But in New York City, again, we're doing everything in our power to do the right thing, to protect children, and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Long. Thank you all for your testimony today. Chair Brennan.
Thank you, Speaker. We've also been joined by council members Krishnan and Wrestler. I want to dig in a little bit more on the per diem cost. So the two variables that most influence the administration's estimates for the costs related to the asylum seekers are the estimates of population served and the per diem cost. So we don't, the council doesn't receive any detailed information as far as what the per diem costs are comprised of. So could you provide us with, with all the components that go into calculating the per diem costs?
Happy to do so. Thank you for the question. So the per diem that we calculate is comprehensive of all asylum spending to support this population. So that would be services and supplies at the site, housing rent and initial outfitting to get the site set up appropriately for the populations, IT administrative costs, food and medical. And so we aggregate all those categories to make sure that we have a comprehensive view of all the spending we're doing to support this population, and then we amortize it over the household nights that we've served over the period of time.
So is the per diem calculation the same for all agencies?
When we do the asylum calculation, we aggregate across all agencies because we see this as one ecosystem. There are important costs, such as centralized costs, that you cannot draw a direct line for populations that are residing in any of the agencies. And so to make sure that we have an accurate picture of the total cost per diem for the populations, we make sure, we have to make sure that we capture the centralized costs. And so we, we, we aggregate the entire system into one ecosystem and, and calculate the per diem that way.
The components that make up the cost for the asylum seekers, do they differ greatly from the historical cost for a traditional DSS shelters?
So I, I think it's important here to take a bit of a step back in the sense that this per diem calculation, while it's a per diem, i- is conceptually a little bit different than the DHS one. Because the DHS per diems that you might have seen before the asylum seeker crisis, right, are really based on the costs of serving a population at a site, whereas our, our use of this per diem is to get a sense of the entire costs, including the centralized cost of the sort of intake facility for these migrants and, and as well as other centralized costs, like it's transportation across facilities. And so it's, it's, it's a different type of per diem that is sort of in some way more comprehensive because that's the purpose of using this number, to get an estimate of the cost going towards the entire support to the asylum seeker response.
So as far as the cost breakdown, trying to get a better understanding of what's included in the administration's expense category. So the cost of the asylum seeker response has typically been represented to us through costs broken down by the type of work. So the reports usually have included five different work types. So housing, rent, initial outfitting, services and supplies, IT and admin costs, and other, medical and food. Could you give us a, a breakdown, a detailed breakdown of the specific costs that are included within each of those five work types?
So thank you for the question. I can break down what we've spent so far in this fiscal year by those categories. Just contextualize this. So services and supplies have been 464 million. House, housing, rent, initial outfitting, 333 million. IT administrative, 122. Food, 64. And medical, 26. And within those categories, for example, services and supplies, this captures things like the staff at intake who do registration, the security, the laundry, guest transportation, a lot of those administrative components that are not just for the Arrival Center, but also for the sites, including cribs, diapers, baby formula. In the housing, rent and initial outfitting, it's the room rate. A lot of times now we're seeing furnishings because we're building out new sites completely. Medical is the baseline medical staff, the isolation staff, TB screening, vaccinations. And on the IT side, we have the technology, the technology build-out, Wi-Fi, staff laptops, and those kinds of costs.
Is the actual sheltering the, the lion's share of the cost, or is it something else?
Sure, let me look at the spending to tell you. So if we look at the grand total of what we have spent since the beginning of the crisis, which is the 2.46 billion, 1 billion is for services and supplies, and about 893 is for rent and the initial outfitting. So it's not the majority, but it is the second-largest cost.
Okay, so out of the current $394 per diem cost, can you break that down to us by dollar? What, what it breaks down to, food, rent, shelter services?
So as Michael was saying, we, we look at this from a holistic view because unlike the DHS per diem from the, from before we had the asylum crisis, those, that system is pretty homogeneous when you look across the board. So you have a family or children's site, it kind of looks the same across the board, same with the other populations, single adults and, and adult families. Because this is a totally different system that we essentially built from the ground up, it, we don't break out the per diem in that way because we're seeing so many agencies incur costs that benefit each other's system. So we don't want to mislead by saying this cost in this agency as opposed to the whole thing because it's really, there's a lot of shared resources and shared contracting that's happening. And so when we do the per diem, we look at the system-wide costs.
But, so if I'm looking at a pie chart of $394, can you break down what makes up that $394? It doesn't have to be exact to the cent. I'd like it to be, but it doesn't have to be.
Because we sort of need to have a comprehensive view of all costs, we aggregate all the costs and do not break them down into the subcategories. You can see the historical spending, but because there is sort of a mixture in the historical spending to date of one-time costs, recurring costs, and variable costs, those breakdowns are very volatile, right? And so in order to have the most accurate forecasts, we look at the aggregate number and trends in the aggregate number.
So you can't, I, I understand, but you can't tell me, out of the, the $394, $50 goes to this, $120 goes to that?
I think part of the problem that they're trying to articulate is it's, because it's, it's a system, right? And so you have different folks that are receiving different sort of services within that system, but there's also cross-pollination across sites and across the system. So it's not like you could just say, you know, of that 300-some-odd dollars, you know, $25 for everybody is security costs. What I think that they could provide is sort of, this is a holistic look at the budget and a breakdown of the entire ecosystem that they could provide that pie chart to. But it would not equate to an individual because different individuals are receiving different services or different pieces of that based on what type of site they might be at, based on the makeup of their family, based on what their particular needs might be in this system. And so that's why they're taking this more sort of ecosystem approach, where they look at the top-line number and divide it by the number of people in our care, as opposed to something that has a more homogeneous population. So that larger number could be provided, but not a breakdown for each individual.
I under, I understand that. I just, we're coming up with 394 somehow, right? So how are we getting there?
The 394 takes the estimates of all costs that the agencies give us between July of 2022 and August of 2023, and divides by the household nights in care.
Okay. I want to talk about the, the HERC. So I want to get a better understanding of how these costs differ. OMB indicated that the per diem cost for asylum seekers in the HERCs was $400, while the cost for those in HERCs was $400, while the cost for those in DHS shelter systems was $254. The council never received any kind of breakdown of any per diem costs, I think as we just detailed just now. If the HERCs are so much more expensive, why are we relying on them so much? Are they better than what's happening at DHS, or why are they so much more expensive?
So let me, thank you, council member. Let me start, and my colleagues will jump in. I think for the first almost year of this crisis, DHS was on the front lines. And we reached out to all of our traditional providers, then we reached out to, you know, providers that worked with ACS and DYCD. We brought in providers who'd never done any business with the city before. This has been an overwhelming challenge, and there is no possibility for this to be a DHS response alone. You know, our system is one that evolved over 40 years, and in 18 months, we've more than doubled the size of the universe of people receiving sheltering services. So we absolutely depend on the colleagues here at the table for this to be a whole-of-government response. It's just too big for one agency to handle alone. That being said, you know, I think high levels, some of the reasons for cost differences that you see is we do have some infrastructure that we can capitalize on, that's helping, but also that I think there are costs that are system-wide, that because they might be initially paid for out of the H&amp;H budget, or maybe getting front-loaded into some of the HERC dollars, right? So when you're looking at per diems, it isn't necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison. But also note that we have about a third of our sites at this point are staffed by the National Guard, which is a real cost, but not one that you're going to see reflected in the per diem, because it's being borne by the state. And the HERC side doesn't necessarily have that particular piece of it. So I guess to be somewhat brief, I think there's two pieces. One is it cannot be DHS solo, given the scope of the emergency, and two, when you're comparing the numbers, they aren't necessarily apples-to-apples because of the way costs are allocated.
And just, if I may, add a third thing, a third factor that contributes, is when health and hospitals raised our hand to help our DHS colleagues, when this was an emergency crisis that was going at an emergency-level speed, we used emergency contracts. Emergency contracts are probably always going to be more expensive than tried-and-true RFP-chosen vendors that can competitively drive down the price. But going back to what Speaker Adams said a few minutes ago, that's why the most important thing I'll tell you about this third factor is that we're transitioning to do long-term planning now by having already put out four RFPs, thinking about our sites as a series of services. Four of those services are out to RFP, and some RFPs have already closed. So I think that's, you know, going forward, that's a cornerstone of our strategy to reduce cost, is bringing in as much competition as possible through the vehicle of the RFP. So we'll soon see some of the effects of that, but it's not something we've waited to do. We put these RFPs out during, as we refer to it as, the fourth surge for a lot of them. So it was very hard to do long-term planning in the midst of having a sharp uptick of the number of people coming each day to us, but it's a high priority for us, and I know it is for you all as well, and that's why we went, why we did that during this fourth surge.
So I think we've identified 16 agencies that are involved in the asylum seeker response, and some of them are not agencies that typically would handle something like this. So could you provide a summary of the services that each of those agencies are providing, including, if not especially, the ones that are not attending the hearing today?
Do you want to list out what the 16 agencies are that you are speaking of?
Sure, yeah. So we've identified, obviously, DHS and HRA, H&amp;H, HPD, Emergency Management, DCAS, OTI, Department of Health, DDC, NYPD, DEP, NYPD, DYCD, FDNY, parks, ACS, and DOB. Maybe, I think I said PD, I said PD twice.
Yes. So a lot of the agencies that you see reflected here are involved in our siting processes in one way or another. So for instance, DDC, HRO, and DCAS, for varying parts of this, will hold parts of contracts or leases or parts of the siting process, because again, this is a whole-of-government approach, and we needed to pull in capacity from everywhere. OTI is really managing our entire technology needs. We're working with NYPD on all the safety and security at our sites, not just the safety of our individuals, but also when there's protests outside our sites, for instance, then we need NYPD to be there. DOHMH is also helping on some of the health-related needs. I think that that's, and then we also have little pieces of parks, whenever we were using parks land, for instance, they need us to fix the ground, or they need to do processes to make it possible for us to be there.
Yeah, or roles that they play in, Randall Island, places like that. I mean, look, this is completely normal for Emergency Management, correct, that you sort of have a host of agencies that you tap into based on their core competencies. So for example, when it comes to sheltering and housing, there are certain core capabilities that we at Emergency Management have, based on the ability to run coastal storm shelters. It's not a one-to-one, but it's something that we can adapt to this. HPD is another example of that, right? They run emergency sheltering programs through the Red Cross, and we work very closely with them after disasters to find housing for folks, right? So there's a core competency there as well that also extends to health and hospitals. So to the extent possible, what we've done is tapped into the resources of various city agencies to coordinate a collective response. And then, as Molly said, there are a lot of agencies that in particular are involved in the establishment of these sites, whether it's DOB, FDNY, DYCD, you know, we, et cetera.
And on the human services side, as I noted, we have a number of our shelters that are being run by National Guard. They are terrific operational folks, but not social service experts. We have partnered with ACS, DOYCD, DOHMH, others to provide services on-site at some of our, particularly the Families with Children shelters. We're very grateful for their partnership.
And just, I tried to furiously write down everything as you were saying it, but I'm not as fast as I used to be. Just to give you some precise answers to, Molly's faster than me. So OTI helped to build out the database and how we store and look at data across our whole city system, which has been, I think, pivotal. And I would actually say, one of the things that's unique about New York City is all of this assessment data that I referenced earlier, that's our opportunity to have specific targeted interventions, which we have in New York City that I don't know if other places have, but it's going to, again, be a very important part of our approach. DOHMH has been a critical partner to think about communicable disease, both prevention, screening, management, things like that, the whole way through. DYCD has enabled us to have English as second language classes, which we've had, Director Atlas can correct me here, but I believe five or six so far through DYCD. I've attended some myself. It's really heartwarming. People are learning to speak English, they can get the jobs they want, which is their number-one goal. And ACS has been a critical partner to thinking about the safety of children. We're in constant communication with them if there's any concerns. But I think your question actually is a really nice way of just outlining that this is not just one agency, not just DHS, holding all of the weight themselves. This really is a whole-of-government approach, and I think it's the best of government, seeing what we've been able to do when we all come together as a whole of government in New York City.
Doc, I mean, I think HH is doing a great job. Do you, the question I have is, as far as the spending for H&amp;H versus DSS is greatly outpacing the spending at DSS. Do you, going back to what you said before, I'm assuming you attribute all that to the emergency contracts?
Well, I think there's two other important factors, and then I'll turn to my colleagues at OMB to share more. But one is that H&amp;H has started things that affect the whole system, such as the Arrival Center. So the Arrival Center was a tremendous endeavor in terms of our ability to streamline services and localize as much upfront as we can. We do everything from communicable disease screenings, urgent care, screening for depression for everybody 12 and above, vaccinations while you're waiting to speak with one of our caseworkers. It's a streamlined model, but overall, it touches every asylum seeker coming into New York City each day. That's a cost that we have on the H&amp;H side. Another is that over time, you know, we've had, we've opened more Families with Children sites, and that's also had a role. And then finally, I guess I had three things. The, some of our NISIM sites that have opened, which Commissioner Escol can share more about, utilize H&amp;H contracts. So that may be coming up as a cost on the H&amp;H contract side, but in fact, is for a different part of our system, so that every part of our system can succeed in making sure that we're offering shelter to everybody as they enter our city. But I'll turn to OMB to share more.
Sure, thank you. You're right to note, council member, that there are, you're seeing a shift in the costs on the non-DSS system are starting to go up. I think there's a few reasons for that, just to add on to what Dr. Long was saying, is that as DHS is sort of tapped out, there's only a limitation of how many more sites they can bring on. We've had to bring in other partners, and the marginal cost of new capacity that comes on, every extra unit, is going to get more expensive because of the market dynamics that Michael was describing earlier. So that's a big part of why you're seeing this shift. Again, we also had to create an entire infrastructure that did not exist before, and so that is also why you see the cost on the non-DSS side of the world starting to go up over time.
Last question for me would be with regard to the DSS shelters. How has the percentage changed as far as asylum seeker population versus homeless New Yorkers?
Thank you. So at the start of this administration, there were about 45,000 people in the DHS shelter system, essentially 100% of them longer, long-term New Yorkers. At this point, there are about 85,000, give or take, people in the DHS shelter system, and about 54,000 of them are the, are more traditional clients, right? We have about 30, I'm probably scrambling my arithmetic slightly, but we have about 33,000 asylum seekers. So at the start of the administration, we were a, we were a system serving traditional clients. At this point, the DHS shelter system, close, almost not quite half, maybe a third of our clients are asylum seekers.
Okay. We've also been joined by council members Moya and Velasquez, and now I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Speaker Ayala for her questions.
Thank you, Chair. So my first question is regarding the OASO operations. So on March 7th of 2023, the mayor issued a report called the Road to, the Road Moving Forward, outlining a blueprint for the city's response to the asylum seeker crisis going forward. And the plan included the creation of a new, the Office of the Asylum Seeker Operations. The council's still not fully clear about where this office is located or funded, and what the responsibilities of the office are.
So I can start with the funding and then hand it over to Molly. So the budget for the Office of Asylum Seeker is 1.6 million, and it supports 10 staff. That is going to be reflected for this year and for FY '25 in the upcoming November modification.
And thank you for that question. Our office has been working since even before that blueprint was released. We brought over people from lots of different places and lots of different agencies to play the real key central coordination role that we're playing, and to really help think of, and move the city forward in thinking of this as an immigration issue rather than a homelessness issue, and trying to bring in lessons from other cities, lessons from the federal government, lessons from everywhere else to shore up our operations and make it a cohesive ecosystem across all the different agencies that sit here. We continue to pivot as the crisis pivoted, and so at this point, we are really looking to shore up our operations, and that's also why I'm sitting here before you today.
So can you share with us, under which city agency is the OASO, how do you pronounce that?
It's OWASO.
OWASO. Office located?
Currently, we're in the mayor's office. We report to the chief of staff, Camille Drosifarlik.
Okay. And we mentioned the budget, which seems pretty minimal in comparison to all of the funding resources that are being spread across the different agencies. And you mentioned 10 staffers. Is that, are you fully staffed, or is there an expectation that you will be hiring? And if so, how many staffers would the office need to operate?
So we're working together on the budget. This is being put together typically with these kinds of offices. At the beginning, you pull in people that are already in the city infrastructure, and then you start building it out. So the budget we have right now for those 10 folks is largely made up of people that we've pulled from other roles within the city infrastructure. Going forward, as a part of the November plan, and as we need to modify, since this is an evolving situation, we will add resources to staff up the OWASO office. And Molly can speak to, you know, more on the roles and the kinds of folks she's looking for.
I mean, we're really looking, we're, our office is really focused right now on forward planning. How do we shore up the legal-to-work pipeline? As, you know, my colleague, Masha Ginler, testified last week about the amazing work we've been doing with asylum applications and TPS and work authorization. So we're really looking to shore up that work. We're really looking at citywide infrastructure, what do all these agencies need to continue doing this work to the level that we want to, obviously looking at cutting costs, that is something key to our mission, and really looking at resettlement models and how we can move forward and really do resettlement long-term. And so all of those things are the roles that we're looking for as well.
So you are currently hiring?
We are currently hiring.
Okay. Yeah, because I did see there were about, I think, 16 positions that were posted. So that would get you to 26. Is that the number you're looking for?
At this time, but as mentioned, we continue to pivot and shift as this crisis requires us to.
So could you kind of, because I'm still a little bit confused about what the actual functions. I, I'm getting that there's a lot of coordination that happens under your purview, but could you walk me through that a little bit? Because, just so that I better understand, it's been a long morning for me.
So, I mean, I, you can talk to each of these commissioners. I annoy them daily. I call them probably throughout the day. Our office is really tasked to making sure that we're continuing to shelter people in the way that we can, that we're finding beds, that we're finding, bringing sites online, that we're really connecting all of the individuals throughout our system to each other and to the resources that the city has to offer, and that we're really, again, looking ahead, talking to other cities, making sure that we know what's happening at the border, we're able to communicate that out to everyone here, get some situational awareness, and that we're helping to work with the state and federal partners to make sure we get the most support out of them as we can.
I would just like to remind Director Schaefer that she's under oath. She doesn't just call us during the day. She calls us 24/7. But I would just say, I mean, it is the work that Molly, in particular, and her team have been doing is really remarkable. They've really, behind the scenes, been keeping this city's head above water. Every day, they are hosting calls with all of the different agency partners, making sure that we are coordinating movements of the population, spearheading the opening of new sites, making sure that we're all staying on task, and that is a 24/7 operation. And so it's really been incredible working with them, and it's great to see this now, taking something that Molly has been doing sort of as a additional role over the last 18 months, and now having some infrastructure, so she's not just doing it by herself, which she really has been doing.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Commissioner Escol said, and note that it's not just Molly calling us, but, you know, every time we run into a question, into a hiccup, into a, I need to get these three people on the phone, I need to problem-solve X, Y, and Z, I call Molly, right? So it is, it is, she's doing an incredible job herding all of us cats.
And just to hearken back to what Chair Brandon was saying a few minutes ago, the way this is a whole-of-government response is by having excellent communication among all of the agencies with our daily, seven-days-a-week phone calls. That's like the secret ingredient, to being able to take all of the agencies, respectively what they do best, and bring it all together into the New York City response.
George, you don't want to share how great Molly is? I mean...
I'm sitting here next to Dr. Ted, so, you know, I don't necessarily get the airtime I might want. But the thing you should know also about what Molly does is, right, like, we all are coming every day into this coordination meeting, right? And she's coordinating with Dr. Ted at the Arrival Center. How many people are coming in? How many rooms do we need? And then she's pushing all of us to get those rooms and bring them online. And, you know, I'm at HPD, Zach Isco's OEM, so we're all, we all have our other hats that we wear in addition to this.
our other hats that we wear in addition to this hat. And like, when we say we're bringing on a new hotel, she tells us to do it today, you know? Because she's thinking about the people that are standing in line at the Arrival Center, right? So she's helping us focus on what's important and keeping people off the streets. So for, for us, it's like an accountability system that's like super important to all the folks that are working on this at HPD.
Molly's like the holder of information and coordinator extraordinaire. That's great. No, that's great. I mean, obviously, in, in light of what's happening, you need a person that's kind of centered, right? That is not, you know, as preoccupied, right? And, and with the day-to-day of, of, of running these facilities, so, you know, obviously appreciate, appreciate all of those efforts. Now, I have a couple of questions regarding the, so we've heard about the, obviously, the six, you, you know my opinions on the 60-day rule, the 30-day rule. I just, it's been three months, and in three months, we've had, you know, three different policies presented. I get the, the nature of the seriousness, but I just, I, I would love for somebody to explain to me, you know, and I, I don't know if it's too soon, but if it is too soon, then that, you know, speaks to a larger question of should be, should we be implementing a new policy in light of the fact that we don't have enough information yet? But what is the cost savings to the city to move folks to implement the 60-day policy? Like, how much money are we actually saving by doing that? And I, and I ask because I know that, I don't know how mu, what the nu, the exact number is, Molly? Maybe you can share, or Zach, of individuals that already received the 60-day and the 30-day that have rotated out and, you know, are possibly either relocating or rotating back in?
So I can't talk to the cost savings as it's very early days, as you know, but we've, at this point, we have given over 13,560-day notices and 5,330-day notices. As mentioned, we have 4,000 people coming each week. We, we coordinate every morning to find spaces for them, but it, it gets increasingly hard as we continue. And we've had more than 130,000 folks through our doors, as Dr. Long mentioned earlier before, I mean, earlier today. More than 60,000 people have already left our shelter system and, and been able to connect with family, friends, and connect to other resources in the city. This is just really, again, giving us a time limit to help people and making sure that we're pairing this with really intensive case management. And again, we've seen some early success in this.
How do you define success?
Sorry, do you mind if I just add something to, so I think, I think one thing that I, I know you, you've heard this a lot before, but we are not operating in a place where we have good options or choices, right? We, we are operating from a place now where we are, we are choosing, where we are forced to make decisions that are, are sometimes just the, the least worst option. I think with the deadlines in place, there's a number of sort of things that we're looking at. Cost savings is, is one of them that we're assessing. Space is another, and operational capacity to support incoming people. I think there's another piece that we're looking at, which is the resourcefulness and ingenuity of the population in our care, and that if, if given a deadline and if given the intensive case management, they often find their own way, and we're seeing that. And that is success ultimately, right? Is, is, is being in our system is, is not successful. People leaving our system, getting on their own two feet, that is successful. And I think this is something that we're going to continue to look at, right? We, we share your concerns about the potential downside of these deadlines. We get it. The, the people up here, we care deeply about the people in our care, and it's something that we are going to be watching very, very closely. And if it is not working for some reason, if we see the large numbers of encampments or people on the streets, this is an administration that will then adjust to those challenges if we need to. But I think what we are seeing right now is some initial success with this, the deadline, the ingenuity and capabilities of this population of people then making it out on their own.
Let me just jump in there, since, since Commissioner Escol mentioned encampments. You know, as you know, DHS operates 24/7, 365 a day, 365 days a year outreach to people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, something we're monitoring very closely, but to date, we have not seen any meaningful number of asylum seekers among those experiencing unsheltered homelessness.
I just wanted to add, because we think a lot about what success looks like, and, you know, ultimately, I think our mission is to help asylum seekers complete their journeys. They're all here for the same reason, to create a better life and escape from horrors and trauma that they experience in their countries of origin. When they get here, at one point, I just wanted to drive home, is I don't think that the limits in and of themselves are what's enabling people to achieve that, the goal of a better life. I think it's our ability, which we've started to do so far, to pair notices with case management services. And that's why I'm particularly interested, as we go forward here, having that be the cornerstone of everything that we do, as the glue that connects people. It's not just a way of saying you have a certain number of days in the system. It's our way of saying, we have this much time to either help you to get resettled, to get authorized to work, to get OSHA training, to get ID NYC, to get the job you want, or to get re-ticketed, you know, anywhere in the country. Once we've worked with you to identify that's the best option for you, maybe and your children. So I just wanted to make the point that the case management piece here is beyond critical. I think it's the cornerstone of, of how we need to be looking at this.
All right. Just reminding everybody that you're under oath, and I, I need to ask a serious question. Does his pleasant demeanor and disposition annoy the crap out of you? He's, I've never seen him angry or upset or stressed out.
Are we supposed to talk about Doctors Longs?
Yes.
It, it did originally, but, you know, he's really, he's grown on all of us. He is, he's Ameri, he, he was New York's favorite doctor. He's now America's favorite doctor, I think it's safe to say.
He's just, I don't, you can't, I don't even know how to question him.
Thank you.
I try to be mean and tough with him. I can't. So, so, all right. So I think I'm going to go back a little bit, just because, this is, you know, I think that the, part of the issue here is that there are so many agencies and so many hands that are involved. Obviously, you know, this is, this is horrible. It makes it a little bit, you know, more difficult to kind of ascertain, like, where we are, right? Where we're doing really well, where, you know, where we're not, where we could be doing better. I obviously will, you know, continue to stay on the record that I do not agree with, you know, the six, the applying the 60-day rule to families and children. I just think it's really catastrophic that we wouldn't even think about doing that. You know, many of these families came here with nothing, and throughout the course of time, right, they've been able to kind of, you know, be able to have, get access to clothing and materials and things that, right, make them feel a little bit whole. Now you imagine you have four children, and now you have to leave the shelter after 60 days, and, and you're one of the families that doesn't have anywhere to go, right? Then you have to grab all of your stuff, because I'm assuming on the day of, you have to pack up all your stuff and you have to leave, right?
So...
Can you put, Molly, can you put the, thanks, sorry.
We'll get back to you on the details of exactly what happens on day 61. We're still formulating the exact plan of what happens for the, by, by that day, we should know which families are going to leave and which ones aren't because of our intensive case management.
I mean, but if 60, if, if the, the letter was given, handed out to a thousand people, those thousand people are leaving. That's the rule.
And some, some percentage of them are going to move on, hopefully within the 60 days, to other parts of the city, to housing, to the rest of it, to wherever they're going. But what I'm saying is, we may, ultimately, the way that the 30 and 60-day is working is people will come back to the Arrival Center. I, I can't tell you today that that's exactly the same way that we're going to handle the families with children. We're still formulating that, and we'll get back to you on it.
But I think the, the two critical pieces to mention is school and healthcare. So on the school side, and the mayor has said this, we're committed to working with DOE, who has been a terrific partner, I don't know if they were on the list we talked about earlier, about connecting kids to school oftentimes the day of, when they arrive at one of our sites, to make sure that we are, are offering the families everything to support their children's continuous education. And on the healthcare side, the same thing goes. If a family's receiving healthcare at one of our sites, and they're going to be moving for a variety of reasons, maybe they're moving because they found the apartment they want, we're going to be working with them through the vantage point of case management during that time period to make sure that they get uninterrupted care that they and their family deserve. So those are things that are ongoing, but those are, I think, two very high priority things that we'll be sharing more information with you as we go forward.
So I, I've heard the number 4,000, you know, being shared regularly that there are 4,000, 4,000 people coming in a week, right? Is that right? Of those 4,000 people that are coming in, how many, how many make up, you know, how many are families? Because, and I'm asking because initially, what we were told was that the number of, out of the, the influx number of people that were coming in, they were primarily singles, right? We had a, a, a lot of single, primarily males that were coming in. So how many, you know, out of the 60,000-plus people that we have in, in, in care now, how many of those make, are families?
As Molly pulls up the number here, and we, we can get it for you shortly, just to agree with the first part of what you said, so for sure, that's true. When we started doing this work in, when Health and Nascentals got involved in October of last year, when we opened with Commissioner Escol, our first Randall's Island site, the majority of people coming in were single men. And interestingly, at that time, too, when we were, when I, because we spent a lot of time talking to the asylum seekers at that juncture about what they wanted, and like clockwork, they would often say, we want to work for three weeks because that's as much time as it would take for us to make as much money, enough money to bring our children and the rest of our family up from typically Venezuela up here to New York City so that we could be together again, and we'd see them get reunited. So that's part of the reason why...
Three weeks?
Three weeks was a common number.
Doing what kind of job? Because I need to be in that industry, because I don't know that I can bring anybody up from my, on what, even what I make, and to, so...
Again, I think, as Zach said a few minutes ago, people that have made it this far come with, with a variety of resources individually, but many come with nothing except for their resourcefulness. And the journey to get up here is literal hell, as you know. And when they get here, they're the most highly motivated people you could possibly imagine. So all of that's to say, to make the point around, we were seeing initially adults. We did see more adults exit our system day by day, and I think a factor of that is the fact that they had specific goals. And the, and the goals of families with children are going to look different, and that is...
But then, has the number of families grown, is what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah.
So a majority of the asylum seekers in our care, more than 40,000 are families with children. It's incredibly dynamic week to week, also because it's, it changes the, the nationalities that come in change, and so does the population that comes in. Originally, it was single males, and then it shifted to mostly families with children that were coming in week by week. We've seen another uptick of single males, so it continuously changes. But I will say that the majority of the folks in our care are families with children.
And just to give a specific number on the H and H side, if it helps. So our HH humanitarian centers today, we have 22,861 individuals. Of those, 15,417 are among families with children.
Okay.
George.
Yeah. I think for the, the entire system here and our terms and conditions, which we sent over to, to, to you all at council, we have 63,000 total people. 47,000 are, 47,864 are families with children.
Okay. And so I'm assuming that the original 60-day and 30-day rule idea that we would be able to empty out enough beds to better accommodate for families with children is not sufficient? Is not yielding sufficient vacancies at this point?
We're still getting 4,000 people per week. We still have more than 130,000 people who've come in. This is not something that anybody wants to do, but it's sort of out of necessity at this point. And I will also mention that we know that our families with children are our longest stayers, both in the traditionally unhoused shelter system and in the asylum seeker system.
Understood, but if you run out of, if you run out of beds, right? We have 60 beds, and we are at 60. And now we have a 61st, a 60, you know, a, an additional person coming to the system. Then am I going to get rid of one of the 60 to make space for that one, and then take that person and then move them? Like, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. So the only, the only conclusion that I can come to is that this is a way to kind of go around the right-to-shelter law. Is that a correct assessment of what's, of the rationale for that? Because I don't, I don't understand why not just say, well, we're at capacity. We have 60 beds. We don't have any more beds. We cannot identify any new beds. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to take any one new unless a bed becomes available. Does that make sense?
So I, I understand your question, and with the caveat that we don't have children in the sites that NHMRC Humanitance is running. But I think just one thing to sort of, sort of think about is, is it is, in our estimation, infinitely worse to say to a family that just arrived here, we don't have a place for you, than it is to provide services and help to a family over a period of time where you can then help them get on their feet, help them get established, and then make room for a new family to provide those services to. And I think that's just one sort of variable that I think is, is missing from that assessment.
And as we mentioned before, with our 30 and 60 days, we have seen some individuals make other plans, and it, again, really gives us a time limit for really intensive case management to pair with that, to really help individuals make the best choices for them. We've said many times, living in a hotel room with your family is not the best. And so this really gives us an opportunity to do that intensive case management and see if we can shake up some capacity that way as well.
No, I agree with all of the rest of it. I agree with the case management. I agree that the, the spaces that we're housing people are sometimes not ideal, not places that I would, you know, would be my first or second, or even third option. I agree with all of that. I just wonder if there's a different way to do this without having to disrupt, you know, families. And I, you know, I've, I've heard, you know, many reasons why, you know, one of them being that the more we move people around, right, the, the likelier it is that they'll leave, which I don't agree with. I think that that is really, really just poor policy, and I don't think that that's something that, you know, we should be adhering to here in New York City. And I'm not accusing any one of you of saying it, but it's something that I have heard, and it's something that I have, you know, you know, it really bothers me that we have that, that thought process. I have a few questions here. I'll ask, try to ask them quickly, but before I do that, I have a question regarding security. How much money are we putting, are we spending on security for these sites? And I, I imagine that that varies by agency, but it's...
Thank you, council member. So without actually giving a specific answer, and we can, can circle back if we don't have it, I actually say it varies not just by agency, but really by site. One of the things that we look at most importantly when we're developing a security plan by site is, is how many points of, of entrance are there in a building? We need to make sure that the, the doors are secure and that nobody, nobody unauthorized can get in. So, you know, there are some buildings that have two doors, and there are some buildings that have eight doors, right? And we're going to need a very different security plan depending on what the actual physical layout is. So we at the Department of Social Services go site by site, develop a security plan for each site. There will be, you know, the minimum is that there will be security on site 24/7 every day, but it's going to look different depending on what population and what the physical layout of the site is.
I'm assuming the security is there to intervene in case that, you know, I mean, to make sure that everybody's safe, and if a fight were to break out, are they then tasked with, like, calling the NYPD if necessary, if they deem that necessary?
Yes, absolutely. They will, they'll escalate a situation if needed. Yeah, the primary role of security at the Department of Social Service sites is to manage access control, right? Make sure nobody unauthorized is coming in, and then to intervene in any kind of emergency. Could be some kind of a conflict, as you mentioned, but also to make sure that, you know, if somebody needs, we need to call 911 because somebody is having a health emergency, right? They can also do that. And then they, they will flag issues to the social service staff that are on site as well for follow-up.
So does anybody here know why then Mr. Pearson, Tim Pearson, was at, in my district at Words Island last week with what I read? I don't have any, you know, real information other than I, this is some information that was shared in the press. 100 police officers, two drones, and it was 100 police officers, two drones, and I forgot the, I forgot the rest. But, oh, and, and dressed in an NYPD uniform, not uniform, but he had a jacket that said NYPD in the back. I, this is in my district. I hadn't heard that there were any issues, but I know that we have security there because I've been there myself, and I understood that there were some issues with quality of life. You know, there were some vending that may not have been permitted on site. There was some maybe can collecting happening in the perimeter of the, of that, that shelter. But would anybody know why exactly Mr. Pearson would have been at that site or any other? And I mean, I don't even want to touch the fact that he is... And I mean, I don't even want to touch the fact that he is alleged to have choked and thrown a security, a female security officer, at another site that same day. But I don't, I don't understand, like, if we're paying for security, what is that role? What exactly is Mr. Pearson's role in the security of your sites?
Thank you for that question. We work closely with the NYPD and all our agency partners to ensure our sites are safe and secure, and the safety and security of our staff and those in our care are our top priority. The incidents you mentioned are under review, so I can't comment further, but happy to circle back if we have any updates.
I would, and I would, you know, I think that it would have been nice to kind of get just a little bit of a heads-up, that something did happen, you know, on Randall's Island, because, again, I've been very supportive of the process, and trying to be as helpful as possible, so it's really alarming to me when things like this happen, and I have to read about them in the press. I had no idea that there was even, you know, a question about, you know, illegal vending or anything else, which, you know, obviously, I think that could have been taken care of in a different way. I don't think that it's a good use of resources to bring in 100 police officers for quality of life, you know, concerns that could have been addressed by the security there, by social service providers, that could have better explained, right, what New York City rights and, you know, laws are pertaining to that. So, I hope, you know, that, and again, I hope that there is an investigation that's ongoing, and that, you know, at some point, we get a little bit more clarity, but it, you know, I have said, and I will stand by this, if in fact, Mr. Pearson is guilty of the things that he has been accused of, he needs to step down immediately. And with that, I'll just ask you two, three questions really quickly, and so, in fiscal year 2023, the asylum seeker response expenditures for DSS totaled $764 million. In fiscal year '24, spending to date for the agency totals $306 million. What percentage of each age, of each year's spending is specifically for emergency shelter costs?
Thank you. So, the vast majority of that is emergency shelter costs, but we lump in, into the emergency shelter, that would include the cost of the physical space, but it's also the contract with the provider, which covers the social services, the food, the security, right, so that we consider, because I'm tight, we consider to be all of that to be the sheltering costs, because we don't, we don't break out the food, or, sorry, the cost of the real estate versus the services, we think both of them are important. That being said, the cost of hotel rooms is a very, is a key driver of that, of the, you know, approximately 2% of that, those total numbers that are not related to sheltering. It includes some, some legal services, translation contracts, various other related support services.
Would it be possible to provide a breakdown of the non-shelter costs budgeted for each DHS and HRA?
Yeah, we can follow up with that.
Okay, and also include, how much, how much has HRA and DHS spent on staff overtime related to the response in fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024 to date?
Sure. Fiscal year 2023 was a total of about $6 million, split relatively evenly across the two agencies. Fiscal year '24, for the first two months, which is the most recent data that I have, it's been about $1.8 million. Although the bulk of the response is on the DHS side, we do solicit volunteers from across the combined DSS agency to work overtime at the shelters, which is why you see it, the overtime cost covering both DHS and HRA.
Great, thank you. And DHS is the primary agency providing temporary shelter to unhoused individuals, largely through contracted nonprofit shelter providers who administer services. As a result, these contracts offer the best basis for comparison of how costs for similar services differ between regular and asylum response contracts, whether they are emergency contracts for competitively bid contracts. How do the asylum seeker contracts compare, and I know it sounds like we've asked this question a million times, but how, how do the asylum seeker contracts compare in cost of similar contracts issued under the regular process at DHS? Please provide specific examples, if you can.
Thank you. It is a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison. So, just to give you the pre-asylum per diem numbers for DHS, and these are, as reported in the MMR, I'm using fiscal year 2022, because that's the last year where there were no asylum numbers in there. For single adults, it was about $136, for adult families, 172, and at families with children, 188. Those are significantly less than the asylum per diems on either the DHS side or across the board, as we've previously discussed. I think a big piece of that is that a typical DHS site is in a site that was developed as shelter, sometimes ground up new construction, sometimes a building that has been adapted for the use, and that has a nine-year contract, where we're paying rents that are sized on market comparables for residential uses in the neighborhood. When we have to use hotels, those are much more expensive. Hotels can be turned on very quickly for use as shelter, is a really important part of our response. It is, it's something that we've used in emergencies and other contexts, but hotels are quite expensive.
How many, how many hotels are we using now?
I believe I have this, all right, just a moment. DHS is in 144 commercial hotels specifically for asylum seekers, there are, my sister agencies are also using some, some commercial hotels as well.
How many are you using, Zach? None? Is HP, HPD using any? Give that number up, give that number up.
So, we have about 30, 35 hotels.
Here in New York City?
No, no, sorry, upstate as well.
Upstate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And H&amp;H, I believe we have eight of our 15 humanitarian centers are hotels.
Eight, okay.
So, and then just to circle back to the question about why DHS traditional per diems differ from, from some of the numbers that we've used from asylum, as my colleagues at OMB have said, right, there are various system-wide costs, we are really working in this, this infrastructure that are incorporated into the, the figures for the asylum per diems, and I will, I will let them speak more to that.
Sure, so, in that per diem that we're talking about, that is associated with asylum seekers, there are centralized costs that are, make it a little bit of an apples and oranges comparisons to DHS, because it's just a different composition of what goes into the per diem. So, to give you a sense of what those centralized costs would be, would be transportation from the arrival center between site, operation of the navigation and arrival center, household re-ticketing, development and management of a centralized guest intake and tracking system, agency staff time, screening and testing for communicable diseases, and so that is all kind of centralized costs that are quite unique to our response in this situation, relative to the system that was being operated before the non-asylum seeker crisis, and so that's one of the driving factors why those per diems look quite different.
Okay, last month, it was announced that the city extended its contract with the Hotel Association of New York City for an additional three years at a cost of $1 billion. DSS indicated at the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget hearing that this arrangement would make contracting easier for shelter providers. How exactly does the approach of contracting with the Hotel Association directly, rather than with a CBO provider, impact any or, and/or benefit CBO providers?
Thank you. Just to start for clarification, we are looking at the contract period for the HANOC contract, I think at this point, I expect it to be a one-year extension, and then we will do some RFPs for the services. But to answer the, answer the question, we are contracting directly with CBOs for, for social service provision, for, and for ancillary support services, like food insecurity and things like that. So, we are still very much using our traditional not-for-profit provider contract model, but by pulling the real estate out of that, and funneling the real estate costs, the hotel costs, through this contract that we have now with, with the Hotel Association, it takes the burden of managing that hotel relationship and the hotel payments off of the not-for-profit. It also means that we have, and it takes it off of, frankly, the agency as well. You know, we have added 150 new sites and only a handful of new staff, so we're always looking at ways that we can be more efficient with how we are operating here. So, what we have, we are managing HANOC, and then HANOC is managing all of the day-to-day payments to the individual hotels. It also means that if there is any hiccup in contracting, anything like that with a not-for-profit, we certainly strive not to have that be the case, but it does mean that they're not on the hook for any hotel bills, which is a major piece of the cost, so it provides some level of protection for them as well.
Do you know if the city was able to negotiate lower nightly rates with hotels because of disagreement?
So, we are still negotiating each individual hotel, the hotel rates with the individual hotels. I do think the fact that we can promise this relatively streamlined payment mechanism does help our interaction with the hotels, it's a little bit difficult to quantify that, that's a sort of qualitative discussion point, rather than quantitative. I would say the driving factor in, there's a number of driving factors in the hotel rates. It's the location of the hotel, they vary by season, right, they're more expensive as we're contracting with them in the summer, and then as we get into the holiday season. It's the extent to which we are, as a, as a city, driving the hotel market as a whole, we are in a lot of hotels, so it is, it's an iterative process to negotiate rates with the hotels.
Do we know what the range in hotel room rates paid under the Hotel Association contract is in comparison to rates on the other asylum seeker contracts?
So, there's a range, both under the HANOC contract and with the hotels that have been procured in other ways, but we're, they are relatively comparable, and we've been working very hard to make sure that we aren't driving the market, having, having one agency compete with another agency by having different rate schedules. You know, we were talking earlier about the, the role that Molly's team plays, and I think making, having that big-picture view to make sure that we are paying consistent rates across the board is, is something that they've been taking very, very seriously.
Okay, this is, and then finally, this is a question for OMB, in regards to state reimbursement, how, how much of the, of what we have spent to date has been reimbursable by the state and the federal government?
Thank you for that question. So, as you know, we appropriated $1 billion in the last state enacted budget. We have received in advance of $250 million against that grant, and through the State Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, we have a claiming process set up, so as we liquidate expenses on a two-month lag, we submit those expenses to the state, and they reimburse, remember, it's 29%, so against that claim, they'll reimburse 29%. In addition to that, we have received from a separate pool of money, $30 million from the state, $10 million for legal services, and 20 for case management.
Can you tell me a little bit about what type of expenses we've been able to submit for state reimbursement?
Sure. It's pretty broad, they allow for expenditures across DHS and the non-DHS sites, including costs for the navigation center and arrival center, so it's, it's pretty much everything that, that we're spending on is eligible for reimbursement, not, not everything, but almost everything.
What would be an example of something that wouldn't be covered?
Medical.
Medical wouldn't be covered?
No.
Okay, that's a big deal.
And we're working with them separately on that, to figure out a reimbursement stream for that.
Okay, perfect. And lastly, I'll ask this question from Molly, has the state approved the, the 60-day policy for families with children?
We are not currently pursuing the, the 60-day policy for families with children in the DHS system. If it is something that we're going to follow up with, we will work with our state partners.
Do the families that are in health and hospitals, does that require state approval as well?
The OTDA oversight is specific to the DHS system.
DHS. So, I'll ask a follow-up question to that, because the last, when we spoke about singles, singles were not, singles within the DHS, the DSS umbrella were not subject to the 60-day, but then, I believe that there was a transferring of DSS singles to HRCs, is that correct?
Correct. DHS has been moving asylum seeker, single adults, out of commercial hotels and into a variety of HRC and sometimes respite settings, so that we can prioritize the families, the hotel rooms for families with children.
So, should we expect that families with children that are under the DSS umbrella will be transferring over?
No, that is, that's not something that is currently under, under consideration. DHS remains very committed to being a part of this whole government effort to shelter the asylum seekers. We had more hotel capacity in our inventory, and so, in the, the goal of keeping families with children in private spaces, doors that locked, we wanted to make sure that we were using the hotel space in that strategic way, so that's why we did those transfers.
And the state approved the singles, the 60-day?
We've, we've been in very close collaboration with the state, they understood both those transfers, and that we anticipate rolling out a notice for the, there's a relatively small number of singles remaining, asylum seekers remaining within the DHS system, and they are certainly aware that we intend to roll out a notice there. We will work, you know, we will work with any client in the DHS system who receives a notice, who does not have a place to go at the end of that time period, to make sure that they have an option.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Brewer?
Thanks, we've been joined by Councilmember Salamanca. So, I guess when I, one sort of, before I get some specifically broad questions, so if I am a family picking up on Councilmember Ayella in the H&amp;H system, and I hit the 60-day, then I would prefer to go to the DHS system, because then I won't get kicked out, is that correct? If I know how to be resourceful.
We are collaborating very closely across all the agencies here to ensure that everybody's needs are being met, and without creating incentives to shop across the different systems.
Okay, but if we're helping families to shop, we might suggest that. Couple of questions before I ask. First of all, on the West Side, we have amazing family who are living on the West Side, they have 401(c)(3), and at this point, they're in contact with all the schools, and I think 100% of the families, and they can really run the whole world, these particular parents. So, one of the issues is, because I know you say that everything is being provided, and we appreciate that, but clothing is still not, is still an issue, according to the parent coordinators. Is that something that is supposed to be paid for, or is it supposed to be given voluntarily, which a lot of communities are doing? But they still don't have coats, they still don't have shoes, et cetera, et cetera. Who's supposed to be in charge of that? And this is H&amp;H and DHS, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to start, so, I mean, that's a very important question. So, we had been providing Salvation Army certificates, so that you can go and purchase whatever clothing that you needed. I think, I would say, I would welcome if this organization wanted to partner with us, and we could, you can connect me directly to them, if they're able to provide clothing to families in need. We have a lot of experience, you know.
So, Salvation Army no longer exists, that particular program, is that what you're saying?
The Salvation Army, I have to double-check whether we're going to be renewing them in this winter, I don't know if any of my colleagues happen to know, but we had them last year, and it was successful. This year, going into it, too, I think if there are organizations that want to partner with us, including, you know, NYC Cares, organizations have a lot of experience.
I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, so right now, it sounds like the, and DHS, is that an issue?
So, traditionally, when, when clients within our system need assistance with clothing, we partner with a variety of philanthropic organizations, we've continued to do that, we've expanded it quite significantly. We do not have a budget for clothing.
Okay, so it sounds like neither agency at this moment has budget for clothing, just unless I'm wrong. Metro cards, so my understanding is that if you don't have a bus for a variety of reasons, you can get a MetroCard. Can you just explain to me, and who's paying for that? Is that the MTA, is that you? One parent coordinator had a request for 80 MetroCards, and she asked, and she got 17. So, of course, that makes it challenging to get to school. So, who's in charge of MetroCard, how much is it costing, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you, council member. So, it's standard practice within the DHS shelter system, that if a family needs assistance with transportation to school, that we do provide MetroCards, and traditionally, the DOE actually owes you... And traditionally, the DOE actually, as you know, provides student MetroCards as well. And we, we can assist with, with cards for parents if they need to, to take their child to or from school.
Yeah, these are parents.
Right. So that is something that is fairly common across the DHS system, not specific to asylum seekers. That is a cost that's borne by the city.
By the city, okay. Just so you know, they didn't get their MetroCards.
Okay. So if we could follow up offline on the specific site, we're happy.
And I don't know if it was DHS or H&amp;H, but they didn't get their MetroCards.
Yep, happy to follow up on that.
Okay. The other question I have is, do we have cost savings for the 30-day or 60-day? Is there like a cost savings that you can, or is it too early to analyze up to this point?
It's too early to analyze, but we're continuously monitoring to the data, and if we see a systematic deviation from our most recent forecast in August, we would update to reflect the impact of those policies. But when we do update the forecast at a given time, we're taking a comprehensive look at all dynamics that are happening, right? So we would also be taking into account, for instance, the acceleration in inflow that we've seen recently, right? So we have to balance in any forecast update what we're seeing, potentially the impact of new policies, as well as, you know, any accelerations or decelerations that we would see at the front door.
So you'll know by August, you'll say whether or not by next Aug? When are you going to know whether there's any cost savings for the 60 or 30-day? I'm sorry, I missed.
Sorry. When I was referring to August, that's the most recent projection that we've sort of locked numbers. We're monitoring to see if there is a deviation in trend, because such a policy, there's really no historical precedence for us to easily estimate the impact. We will see, and if there is a divergence in the data, then the model will, will pick that up and embed it in the next iteration of the forecast.
Okay, I don't really understand what you're saying, but I'll let it go for now. The other question I have, though, about buses. So there's a lot of buses. There's the buses between Port Authority, which I know, I think Ruth Vessinger takes credit for, but somebody got those buses. Then there's the buses upstate, so that George has something to talk about. And then there's, there's buses to get to school. So who's paying for all these buses? What's the, you know, who was doing the RFP, et cetera? A lot of buses. And how can you save money on buses?
Buses, yes, there's buses. So we, we, as a part of the contract we have with DocGo, part of their-
I love that organization.
I know you do. I know you do. I know you do, Gail. But as part of their contract, they, they actually do, they recruit folks in the arrival center, and when, when we have capacity upstate, they charter the bus to go upstate and take folks to their destination.
And that was an RFP to get DocGo to do the busing? Because I didn't know that medical organizations do buses.
Well, they, they subcontract, right? That's what a lot of organizations do. They subcontract to find the folks that have the experience and capacity to lend us a hand in an emergency situation.
So how do we know they get a good price for their subcontract on all these buses?
Well, you know, we're, we're just now receiving the invoices. There's a max, there's a maximum amount they can charge us for transportation, and all that was negotiated at the time of the contract, back and forth.
Well, how would that, for instance, if I rent a bus, which I often do, to go to a demonstration in Washington, DC? That's when I've rented buses. Do you like compare those?
Yeah, every, yes, yes, great point, Gail. Like every time we add something to a contract, we try to get comps to make sure what we're added, what we're adding to the contract is reasonable.
All right. And who's in charge of the bus going from the bus station to the Roosevelt Hotel? Who's, are you, who's in charge of that bus? Who's making the good contract on that?
Yeah, sorry. So we use a lot of different buses, as you've, as you said. There is no regular bus now from the Port Authority to the Roosevelt. However, we also, every day, as we open up new sites, whereas we're moving people from different sites, there's a number of ways that we do that. We tap into MTA buses, we tap into DOE buses, we tap into correction buses.
So they're city buses, is what you're saying.
Decast buses. We get buses from a lot of different places, and every day, there is a team that is coordinating the transportation, and looking at what agencies might be able to provide that service, whether it's the state or another city agency that day to provide that service as needed.
And DHS has fairly extensive contracts for busing already. We, we do a lot of moving people around the city, and we've been able to tap into those.
Okay. The other question I have, when you say intensive case management, my cynical friends tell me that means how to leave the city. So what exactly does intensive case management involve? Yeah, what is, because that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, so going forward, the, the first thing that we've done now, which we're finishing, which will power our case management program, which we hope to formally launch in the next couple of weeks, we call it the Red Yellow Green Program, is getting the data through doing assessments on everybody and every part of our system, from DHS to HPD to H&amp;H humanitarian centers, and asking the same set of questions. For example, we would, we would ask you, are you interested in being resettled, re-ticketed? Do you have friends and family in New York City? A variety of other things. What's your, do you have any questions about work authorization? Do you need help there? Asylum status, things like that. So we take all of that together, and then we formulate that into how many barriers you have to be able to take the next step forward in your journey. And the case manager that's going to be assigned to you will work with you, having two touchpoints each month, checking in about where you are surmounting your barriers with our help. So it's a comprehensive overall assessment that we've now done for approximately 90%, nine zero percent of all asylum seekers in any part of our-
In the H&amp;H system.
No, no, across the entire system, including DHS.
All right. So 90% have had this kind of case management. Do they also get asked about English as a second language? Do they get asked about OSHA? That's what they're interested in. Do they, is that also part of the discussion?
And sorry, let me clarify. The 90% is those that have completed the assessment survey, which has all of these questions, and then based on the survey results for each individual, we're going to say you have red, multiple barriers to you being able to take the next step forward, yellow, medium number of barriers, green, lower number of barriers, so that we could help you more quickly for yourself as an individual or household with children to be able to take your next step forward, which would involve leaving our system. But each asylum-seeking family, household, individual needs something different. We've definitely, that's, that is incredibly true at this point in this crisis. So case management will be using the data, which we have for currently 90%, to then have those two touchpoints per month going forward.
And that's done by DocGo at your facilities?
So while we, right now, we're drawing case managers from DocGo and MedRight, but going forward, we have an RFP that's live today. It's available for people to apply to, that's seeking to find, hopefully-
Another agency that's not-for-profit and on the, you know, looking for more money.
An organization that has a tremendous amount of immigration experience that can help us to-
We'll find somebody else.
We'd love your help with that.
All right, so, and then just going back to these buses again, just quickly. So the buses that take children to school, we have great respect for, but how in the world are you going to get somebody picking up on Councilmember Ayella's question, who is no longer at a location X, but gets moved to another borough, or else, how in the world are those kids going to get to school? To me, that's the most important issue.
As the mayor repeatedly-
I don't, I don't believe him.
Well, we're working every day with the Department of Education to make sure, and again, we'll know closer to the end of the 60 days which families are not leaving and which, which ones are, and be able to make the best operational choices of that.
I, I'm just saying, I'll let you go, but I'm just letting you know, the worst thing you could do is take those kids out of school. The worst thing you could do. Okay, and I don't think that it would make any sense to do it. Those buses aren't arriving on time for kids who live in New York City. The other question I have is, the administration has allocated lots of dollars, as we know. So how does the administration decide which contracts are awarded to which agencies? So I mean, I think we've talked about this a little bit, but there are, as we heard earlier, 16 agencies that are involved, or 13 agencies, Councilmember, mentioned earlier. So how do you decide which contracts are awarded to which agencies? Is that up to you, Molly, or what, how do you decide that?
So this ecosystem is incredibly complex and keeps pivoting as this crisis pivots. As we've said, we've sheltered more than 130,000 people, and so that has meant that certain agencies have had more or less capacity, and certain, as, as Commissioner Iskoll's mentioned before, that also means that we really are leaning on core competencies at different agencies at different times to make sure that we're focusing what, focusing contracts to the agency that is best equipped to hold it. And so our office does have a lot of say over the contracts that are, that are given, as well as just each of these agencies, as well as MOCS and some of our other oversight entities.
The only I'd add to that is, is we are, you know, more often than not, leveraging existing contracts. So it's not about what agency is going to hold a new contract, but what agency might hold an existing contract that we can leverage for these services.
So how do you make sure there's no overlap? And how do you do the audit to see whether it's an efficient way of spending across agency? I mean, that's, how do you make sure there isn't an overlap? And how do you make sure that it's efficient across agencies? Is that Molly's job? I don't know. Somebody has to do that.
So there's a, I'll speak from OMB's perspective. There's a regular process with our agency, looking at expenditures that are coming up, things that are changing on the RFP issue that's come up. We are very much involved in that, so we can have a voice about looking at more efficiencies. So it's really across the board. I say also that the auditing functions are embedded in each agency. They have their own. We are also, you know, DOI was awarded some funding in the previous budget, so they can do their own. And what we're trying to do is, like, audit, you know, happens on the backend a lot of time, and so what we're looking at, especially in OASO, is to build out the function so that's happening more proactively at the beginning, and, and we're going to see more of that as that office is built up.
Okay. There, as you know, this came up somewhat earlier, there are contracts for similar services with pricing that varies significantly. So for instance, an H&amp;H contract with Mulligan, the fire guard position, and those fire guards just sit there. I met them. I guess if you don't have a sprinkler, then you need a fire guard. I got it. I don't know why you don't put the sprinklers in, in my opinion, but okay. So you got the fire guard position costs $46.20 an hour, more than double the $21.04 per hour rate for the same position at DHS's contract with the same, with FJC. Why is there such a large cost difference? Why is the fire guard position hourly rate even higher? $117.25 in HPD's contract with Garner. It's very hard to understand this from the public's perspective. Who wants to start?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. So with fire guards and security, just to talk about from the H&amp;H point of view, the first thing that we did was we looked across the H&amp;H system and saw if we had any relevant contracts for providing the services that we needed at our humanitarian centers. We had Arrow, which is the, again, the vendor that was-
My favorite vendor.
Competitively chosen through an RFP process, that is the current security vendor, as you well know, at our H&amp;H hospital and clinic sites. We built off of that existing procured contract to start with security and things like fire guards. Then going forward, Arrow did not have the capacity to keep up with the emergency speed alone that we needed, given the speed we were opening new sites at. That's why we brought on Mulligan with an emergency contract, so that we could keep up with the speed that we needed to ensure that no families were sleeping outside. Going forward, though, and this is again, going back to Speaker Adams' one of her central points, is that the way that we're ensuring that we have competitive pricing, and the way that we're transitioning from emergency spending to long-term planning, is through the RFP process that we've already initiated. And actually, the security RFP that we put out has closed, and we're making selections that the Health, will be brought to the Health and Hospitals Board shortly.
Okay. HPD is $117 an hour. Garner.
I'm going to put that on your tab.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, maybe next time I'll sit a little closer to Dr. Ted here. So for, for HPD, you know, so we have, we went back to Garner a couple months ago. As Molly Schaefer said, you know, the instructions were really clear to all the agencies to see where we can save costs. So we went back to Garner a couple months ago to see if we could save costs on security guards and fire guards. And so what we've done is we brought down the cost of security guards and fire guards down from $117 to $78 per hour for the vast majority of folks doing that work at, at the Jefferson. And what we've done, we've combined the roles as much as possible. We're finding security guards who are actually credited and trained to be fire guards as well, so we're combining and consolidating those roles too.
Okay, but meanwhile, for a year or something, it was 117. Was that a RFP contract for Garner?
So that, that was the original contract that we executed with Garner, and I think-
That was based on a RFP, or that was an emergency?
So that was an emergency procurement.
I would guess.
Yeah. Well, what we did for that one too, is we brought in four or five other entities, and we did a kind of a quick, here's the scope of services, come back with your best and final, we've got to get this done in a week, because we had to stand it up very quickly. So we did, we, as much competition as we can practically add, we add to the process.
Okay. But now we have 46, 21, and 78. So there's still a difference in the numbers. That's something that, everything will go to RFP as time goes on. Obviously, the Arrow contract at H&amp;H is now, but that will, is that something that you pay attention to at Molly Schaefer? Probably get these numbers down?
Can I just add one thing before Molly adds, answers that question?
Those are big numbers. Have you ever met some of these people? Go ahead.
No, just, just on the security contract. We actually have moved to a requirements contract that Garner already has, citywide, and that was competitively procured.
They need more management, these, you know, it's not the individuals, they need management. And you ask the police department, they'll tell you the same thing, just FYI. Okay. Do you want to answer that, Molly Schaefer, about who's paying attention to these contracts? These folks need a lot of management. It's hard, I know, but ask the police department. They complained to me about the security.
Well, I think I've mentioned before, we're really at an inflection point. We're 18 months in, you know, we really have an opportunity now to relook at our costs, relook at what we're paying in different parts of the system, and really try to standardize and standardize what's happening, and that's exactly what we're doing, and that's why, as David Greenberg mentioned, we're also hiring folks in my office to be able to do some of that audit function, as well as working with DOI and other entities within the city that are looking pretty closely at our contracts.
Okay. In the hourly rate for nurses registered between two H&amp;H contracts, $80 with MedRight and 150 with DocGo, how did I guess? So why is there a difference there?
Yeah, so again, the, the difference between these different costs will be rectified when we go through the RFP process, which again, is the gold standard and best way to ensure we're having standardized and most competitive prices. The way that we set up the costs so far was again, based on our prior experience. So DocGo had had experience through an RFP-selected street health outreach and wellness program. MedRight had had experience through our infectious disease RFP, which is something we used during COVID times. So when we had to move at emergency speed, we utilized the experience that we had with prior things that were selected through the RFP process for similar services. But going forward, again, the most important thing I'll tell you, as you know, is that we've already put out four RFPs, and we plan to put out RFPs for every service to ensure that everything is standardized and price competitive.
So is MedRight also going to be out for an RFP? Is that the whole idea?
Every service we have will be put out for RFP.
At the same time? In other words, they're all up now?
So we're sequencing it service by service. So if you imagine the humanitarian center, there's security, food, laundry, frontline staff, hotel management, you know, everything like that. And we've put out four RFPs so far, and there'll be more to come.
Physicians assistants and two H&amp;H contracts, no surprise. 150 hour with MedRight, and guess what? 225 hour with DocGo. The same thing with SLSCo and Garner. The SLSCo is $100 and 117, respectively, for security guards, when other companies are paying 20 and $40 an hour. Now, I assume that's something that, Molly, you're looking at in addition to the, because this would be across the agencies?
SLS has already sunsetted that contract.
Okay, so it's gone.
And that is going off, out to RFP. I also just think it's important, I think some of the contracts that you're talking about, I think it is important to note, many of them were put out for RFP, but for different purposes that were then repurposed for this emergency. And so now we are going back and looking at where we can be more efficient or cost-effective through new RFPs that are specific to the asylum seeker crisis, but almost all of the contracts that you have mentioned were put out to RFP, but for different purposes. For example, some of the examples that Dr. Long gave earlier in his, in the hearing.
Okay. I'm just going to keep mentioning, though, because I think the public is concerned about the fact that this is costing, they want to understand it, so they can now understand that it was an emergency situation, and now we're doing RFPs, but we did spend a lot of money during this emergency.
Yes, but I-
I don't know if we got our money's worth. Go ahead.
Yeah, but what I'm just trying to make sure we understand is that these are not, the contracts you're talking about are not emergency contracts.
the contracts you're talking about are not emergency contracts. They were, many of them were competitively bid-
Leftover from COVID.
Many, not even leftover for combat. A lot of them were citywide requirement contracts that were competitively bid, that went through an R F P process previously. But now we're looking at, at this stage in the game where we can find greater cost savings because we share your concern and the public's concern.
Okay. Keep going on this topic, though. In terms of food, why does the H and H contract with L I C Com charge significantly more for meals compared to other contracts? Specifically, why is breakfast five dollars with L I C Com contracted with an H and H when the average for other DHS contracts is thirty dollars and six cents? Additionally, why is lunch seven dollars and fifty cents compared to an average of four dollars and eleven, and dinner twelve fifty compared to an average of four dollars and thirty seven cents? So I just want to, on the food generally, can you explain what you're doing to make it both nutritious and appropriate? I know that's a challenge. And at the same time, cost-effective?
So at the, on the DHS side, food is provided in a variety of different ways. The agency itself holds some centralized contracts for food. These are, those are used at our DHS-run non-asylum sites. We have also been tapping into them for asylum sites that have a provider attached to them, but, but where the provider isn't yet ready to stand up a contract. And then for the sites where food is provided by the provider, in some cases, that is, they subcontract for a food vendor, in other cases, they have an internal infrastructure where they can provide, prepare their own food. So, and for some of those, because many of our providers are operating both non-asylum and asylum contracts, they, sites, they will have a single contract for a subcontract for food and cost allocate appropriately. So, so there's a variety of different methodologies. The numbers that you cited are very aggregate. We are always looking to make sure that we are both maintaining the city's food standards, but also providing cost-effective services. You know, all of our subcontracting is going through the city's sixty-five A process where we are looking to make sure that they have done bids and that they are picking an appropriate subcontract vendor.
Yeah, I just had a couple of points. So the numbers you gave, I believe, are, the current numbers we're spending on food at our humanitarian centers are lower, because we've had a concerted effort to provide nutritious food, all of which adheres to the New York City guidance and all of which is halal, and we make food available for anybody that's diabetic, has other dietary requirements, everything like that. But we've made a concerted effort to also focus on food waste, to make sure that we're wasting the minimum amount of food. And when Speaker Adams joined me at a tour of our hotel site at the Crown, Crown next to J F K, my staff excitedly told her that they'd reduced food waste by eighty-seven percent at that site, according to my staff. So just making the point that it's been at the forefront of our minds and that we've been trying to symmetrically drive down any food wastage that contributes to lowering costs while also maintaining nutritious, and I would say culturally appropriate, options for all guests coming from every part of the world to New York City.
Can you explain to H P D, the Doc Go budget is eleven dollars for each meal, which is a higher rate than the vendor's contract with both health and hospitals and DHS. So is it, explain that?
Yeah, so, so the thirty-three dollars is a max. So we've actually worked with Doc Go, and as Molly Schaefer said, we're getting better as we're moving forward and kind of learning the ropes here. We've worked Doc Go to bring that down to under seventeen for all of our downstate facilities per day, per person, per day.
Okay, and what, it was more before, I have eleven dollars for each meal, so that would have been thirty-three dollars.
Thirty-three, yeah, it was thirty-three a day before.
Now down to seventeen?
That was a max. Yeah, now it's seventeen.
Now, are you gonna, when you say that H and H is re-upping their contracts, Doc Go might get it, Doc Go might not get it, but are you doing the same thing? Is Doc Go, like, I'm trying to figure out with all these contracts, one agency might be doing R F P, the other ones doing R F Ps also?
Yeah, so for, for the, the contracts we have that are coming up to term, that we're going to extend, we are thinking a couple steps ahead, like the speaker said, trying to plan and issue competitive R F Ps to secure additional services.
So you are doing that? For everything?
We'll, we'll still need to make a decision on the future of the upstate program.
Okay. Laundry, laundry. Why does H P D's contract with Garner pay three dollars a pound for laundry, while the contract with Doc Go, in this case, lower, surprisingly, a dollar fifty per pound?
Yeah, so, so it's a very similar answer. Three dollars is a max. Actually, laundry in the Garner contract is a pass-through cost. So we've actually seen invoices, and so on average, right now, we're at two dollars a pound that Garner is billing the city for.
Okay, but it was three dollars.
Three dollars is the max in the contract.
All right. And why are there at H and H different contracts for laundry? Sedexo is ninety-one cents a pound, and Happiness is a dollar fifty-nine a pound.
Yeah, so when we first started providing laundry services, similar to what we did with the security, is we looked across the H and H system, and of course, we do laundry in our hospitals, and we had a contract that was competitively procured, where we competitively procured through an R F P, Sedexo. We leveraged the terms from the Sedexo arrangement to set up laundry services at our sites. But as our sites began to expand, Sedexo ran up against their own capacity, so we had to bring on another vendor, Happiness, to provide services so that we could extend those services to all guests. But laundry is one of the four R F Ps that we're going through the process for right now.
Okay. And just in general, laundry is, you know, the S R Os don't have laundry, and hotels, I assume, do. I don't know, but I'm just letting you know, the laundry is often in the bathtub with sometimes problems with the drainage, because there isn't good laundry service. I'm not saying in the hotels it's an issue, but the S R Os, it is an issue. And I won't even get into the schools. We're doing a survey of all Manhattan schools. Do you have laundry? Do you not have laundry? Every single school needs a laundry. In the, in the city of New York, I know this is not your, but it might be Molly's job, we need laundries in the schools. Finally, O M B Department of Investigations. The adopted plan includes, as you know, four point six million in two-four and two point five million in two-five for expenses related to the asylum crisis in the Department of Investigations budget. We understand that this funding is for procurement, for an independent monitor to provide oversight of the spending related to this crisis. Why has the administration decided to work with an independent monitor, and what's the goal?
Thank you for that question. So actually, D O I reached out to us and requested this, and we agreed with them and funded it in the budget.
Okay. And what's the scope of the monitorship? For how long? And is it, is there, somebody's been selected? Can you be more specific?
I don't have all the details, but I am going to circle back to you with the scope and all of the updates from D O I.
Okay. One second. And then, will the review include all agents taking part? We obviously have, what, thirteen, sixteen agencies? Will all of those agencies be, be under this monitorship? And if not, why? Do you know that, or is that just D O I's purview?
Yeah, it's going to be from D O I, and I will-
But sometimes you tell D O I what to do.
They have a plan, and they've submitted it to us, and I'm, I will get all those details to you.
Okay. And then will the review include site visits? I guess what you're going to tell me, that's also up to D O I?
Yes.
I'd guess. All right. Thank you very much. And now we want to hear from, I think, the committee, but it's up to you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. I just have one other question before we turn over to my colleagues. I remember the Biden administration saying they were going to lend us some folks to help with paperwork. How did that go? How long did it last? Is it still going? How much got done?
Thanks for that question. So we had the Federal Work Authorization Clinic, which was a really amazing model between the state, city, and nonprofits, and the federal government. They came in and they helped with paperwork for two weeks. We were able to, to deal with seventeen hundred applications, work authorization applications, which was really important for us. They are going to be coming back in the coming weeks for a little while, so we're constantly in communication about the best kind of support they can give us related to T P S and work authorization.
Set up in advance how long they were going to stay? Two weeks doesn't sound like a lot of time.
Yes, they originally gave us two weeks, and it was set up in advance-
How many people, how many people did they send?
I have to get back to you on those exact numbers. They did send a lot of folks to focus on the biometrics portion, so taking people's fingerprints, and to adjudicate fee waivers right there on site, which is sometimes an extra step when you're doing your work authorization paperwork.
Chair Brewer.
Thank you. Houses of Worship, fifty contracted, two exist. Can you describe to me what we're doing about the Houses of Worship? Are you in charge of those two?
I am in charge of those two, Gail.
Okay.
So we're-
Hey, pasta.
Yeah, we have all the fun ones. So we, we're actually working with a couple more that we have on deck. As I know you know, there are difficulties getting them safe and prepared, but what we can do is maybe we could schedule a briefing for you, because I know you're very interested.
I'm very interested. I can tell you, you have to have either exits or sprinklers. You don't need both. And you can't have whatever, ninety, thirty, I don't know, crazy number, ten people here, thirty, you can't do those big numbers. You got to change your-
No, I think we're targeting nineteen people per facility.
Too many. You can't, some of them can't do that. They can do ten.
Okay.
You got to change your model in order to get people in them.
Yeah. So we're, I mean, we're working with F D N Y and D O B to do it safely. So I think that's maybe something you and I can talk about.
All right, thank you. But two so far out of the fifty, correct?
Two so far out of the fifty.
Not a good number.
Not a good number.
Thank you.
Well, we're, we're working to make them safe, Gail.
Speaker Adams.
Yep. I don't know if I missed this in, in former hearings or not. Along the same lines of what Chair Brewer just asked with the Houses of Worship, how many Houses of Worship are right now online, working with us with asylum seekers?
So our program is just to provide shelter, right? So we have, we have fifty that we're kind of, we're working with right now. We have a couple that are online, we have a couple on deck. But, you know, Houses, Houses of Worship have worked with, you know, us in all, all sorts of manners, in terms of like partnering up with shelters, providing support, working with asylum seekers. So, yeah, Pastor Monroe's probably the best person to talk to about our efforts there.
As far, as far as the fees and all-inclusive, as far as the policies for the city and funding, what does that look like? Per person? Is there per diem involved? What does that look like compared to the overall picture of sheltering?
So they're, they're just one tool we have. You know, we have many different tools, so it's not just Houses of Worship, it's not just hotels, it's not just Hertz, it's not just, you know, DHS facilities. They're, they're part of the entire suite of tools. So we're not, we don't necessarily think it's helpful to talk about what apples and oranges, you know, cost, and, because they're apples and they're oranges, you know? And I think at certain times, we're trying to bring different parts of the city into kind of like the system, our ecosystem of, of capacity to kind of, to help our asylum seekers out.
Yeah, I, I understood that there are many pieces of the pie as far as sheltering is concerned for the city, always has been, but I, she opened a can of worms that, that my mind wasn't really going to, so I just became very curious about the numbers involved. So given the fact that Houses of Worship are a part of the whole ecosystem that we're talking about, so their numbers and all of their, their aggregate filters would be a part of that ecosystem and not necessarily have a breakout?
Yeah, it's part of that ecosystem, so it's a very specific service they're providing. You know, they're, what they're doing is they're making some of their space available. We set up cots, they go there for the night, you know, and then they go somewhere else during the day to get services. So it's a very different part of the ecosystem, but we're just trying to, whoever has capacity, we're trying to bring that capacity into the ecosystem in a way that makes sense for them, for Houses of Worship in particular.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have questions from Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Williams.
Thank you, chairs, and thank you for today's testimony. A few questions, starting, I think I'm going to ask them all because I want the answers to them, and then if you need me to repeat, I can. Is the administration keeping track of spending of resources on the crisis broken down by district? For example, can you provide a breakdown of how much the administration has spent in District Thirty-One in fiscal twenty-four? When a new shelter is constructed, or its population changes, or it's increased, how does the administration ensure that the services surrounding this shelter are supporting this? For example, when a shelter changes over from a single adult shelter to one for families, does the administration commit additional funding to nearby schools? How is the administration ensuring resources are available across languages and properly reflecting the diversity of asylum seekers coming to New York City? Could the administration provide an update on its recent efforts to obtain additional funding from the federal government to support the city as it deals with this crisis? And lastly, last week, the mayor announced a new sixty-day limit on how long a family can stay at one shelter. How does the administration expect this to impact the overall cost projections in the coming fiscal year? And does the administration have any concerns that this could lead to families staying in the shelter system for longer by not providing enough time to find permanent housing?
Thank you, councilmember. I'll start addressing the funding from the feds. So, so far, the city has been awarded one hundred and forty-five point four million through what's called the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. And of that funding, we have received thirty-eight point five million, and, but we anticipate to receive an additional hundred and seven. We are continuing to strongly advocate to Congress and the Biden administration for additional funding, and we appreciate the council's advocacy and partnership as we do that. The other question you had was on spending and how do we categorize that? And so we break it out by agency and by service type. And so just to give you an example, service types, we capture the rent cost, the housing cost separately from the services, separately from the food, separately from the medical. This is very much aligned with how the state wants us to submit our expenses in order to draw down the billion-dollar appropriation that was in the last enacted budget from the state. And as it relates to language services, I'll, I'll hand it over to one of my colleagues to elaborate on what we're doing in that space.
Before you pass on that part, in terms of the different categories, within those categories, are they broken down by district?
We aren't able to break down spending at the district level. What we do is sum it all up by, by those service categories in order to inform the, the universal per diem for what we're spending on the entirety of the asylum operation.
Why are you unable to break it down by district?
It's, I mean, the thing is, when, when you look at spending, spending happens in multiple ways. You spend directly on staff, you spend directly on contracts, you also spend directly on contracts, and then subcontract to somebody else. And so what we, O M B, especially when we're looking at spending, we're looking at really the, the scope of the services, and from a more macro view of how that money is going to go generally. That level of detail of exactly what site is going to get the dollar is something that we're not really, have much very visibility into because of all those layers of subcontracting that happen that, you know, that make the whole picture very diffuse.
I think it's necessary, because in districts like mine that's saturated with shelters historically, if you have a shelter there that's not really getting as much money as a community that may have one or two shelters, and thinking about the, the global impact on that district is important, but we can't be able to truly understand what that looks like without a more granular take on how the agency is spending.
Always happy to take a look at how we can break this down in another way to, to address your question, definitely.
And I could take the next question about language. So for language, we use the same, at our humanitarian centers, the same language line that we use in our, in my primary care practice in the South Bronx and at the New York City Health and Hospital Systems. I believe, system. I believe it's over two hundred and fifty languages and dialects are interpreted. And the way it works is that we have, you can do it by phone, or we have an iPad, where you select the language of choice, and then interpreter will come on and be able to interpret for you. So we have a pretty, a pretty wide, or, we, we have a substantial number of languages and dialects that we can interpret for. I'll, any more questions on language before I turn to Molly about the services around shelters?
No.
All right. I can add on as well on the lan, on language. While we also use language line, we are, we have invested in additional interpretation con, so that we ha, do have onsite interpretation in some sites. It's not something we are doing twenty-four, seven on every site, just given the scope and scale, but, but it is something that we have invested in significantly. With this, as, as you know, we have moved some shelters from single adults to families with children. We coordinate very closely with the Department of Education on making sure that we are connecting students who are placed there with schools. D O E has been a really valuable thought partner in thinking about how they are supporting the schools that have asylum seekers, but happy to follow up offline with, with particular but happy to follow up offline with, with particular challenges there, if there are any.
But to that point, Commissioner, because recently I've been getting a lot of communication from your office in particular in terms of my shelters turning from all men's shelter into family with children, which is fine. The challenge that I'm having is understanding what resources become associated with it. Because you may have a shelter that has fifty-nine units. So that's fifty-nine individual men, I'm assuming. But then now it becomes family with children. So in each one of those units, it's no less than two people in that unit. So is the agency then upping the amount for that provider in terms of the resources that they are seeing? And then in terms of the surrounding community, now you got kids going into the schools. They may need, you know, tutoring or other activities. What, what, what do those resources look like?
Thank you for the clarification on the question. I, I understand it better now. So the occupancy is, thank you, Councilmember. The, the occupancy is typically actually gonna be relatively similar. So the, the, when the site was being used for single adults, and, and I'm speaking generally, I'm sure there are specific exceptions and, and we can follow up. But in general, our, our single adults, the hotels that were used for single adults were double occupancy. And so we would, when we're putting in a, a family, we generally go with the smaller families in those hotel rooms because that's, that's who can fit. So maybe you'd get, you know, a baby in addition to the, a parent, something like that. But it's not gonna be significantly increasing the, the actual number of people on the site. But we, we do make adjustments to budgets. We're gonna be, you know, adding resources for formula, for diapers, for milk, things like that that obviously wouldn't be provided in a single adult shelter, to the extent that we need to make adjustments on the staffing, both the absolute number of people and who, and, and the specific titles. We will work with the provider on, on budget adjustments. And then, and coordination with the schools, as I say, we're doing that via the DOE. They have been a terrific partner. It is very much a site-by-site and case-by-case because we're all, some schools have capacity and some schools are gonna need resources added in order to be able to do that, if there's, but happy to follow up offline with any particular issues.
Have you found that there's been a need for additional resources in the schools when you add more families there? And if so, have you, as an agency, been able to provide additional funds? Or is that solely resting on DOE to provide extra resources?
So we, DHS, DSS doesn't directly fund the schools. So all of that would go through the Department of Education. And then I think it is, so I, I will defer to them on details, but just in general, you know, this has certainly been a, a few years with a lot of change in, in school demographics. So there are some schools that have the capacity to absorb it, absorb more families without a significant change to their budget. In other cases, that's not the case. But I would say DOE has been a really thoughtful partner in, in making sure that, in working with us. And I believe making sure that schools are getting access to additional resources. But I would defer to my colleagues at DOE to talk about the specifics.
Is anyone here from City Hall today?
Yes, hi. Molly Schaefer, interim director of the Office.
Are you able to answer the question, or can you commit to getting us the answer?
We'll circle back with the answer. As Molly Park mentioned, we'd have to, we defer to our colleagues at the Department of Education. But we do work in close coordination to make sure they have the resources to meet this population where they are.
Yeah, I'd like to, to have that follow-up because I recently had a meeting with the principals in my district, in, in terms of what they're seeing. Some of it is more specific to DOE. But again, just wanting to understand, yes, a school may have more capacity in terms of individual students, but they may not have the capacity in their budget for language translation and other services that are needed, like immunizations that they have to get and navigating the system in that way. Those are some of the things that have been shared with me through the principals at my school.
We're happy to circle back. And if you give us specific schools, we're also happy to circle with those schools.
And then the last question was about the sixty-day limit.
Yes, and thank you for that. As mentioned before, we're pairing sixty days with intensive case management to really meet families where they are and try to help them make their exit strategy and their plan with them. And I don't know if Dr. Long, you have anything else to say about that?
No, I think, I mean, with, from the point of view of case management, that is something that is going to be our focus, that, from, both for when we do any notices, but also moving forward with the assessment survey that I was referencing. Our case management program is going to officially launch, if you will, in the coming weeks. And that's gonna be, again, our glue to connect people with whatever they need to complete their journeys, whether that's re-ticketing, resettlement, authorized for work, different trainings, as Councilmember Brewer was mentioning, OSHA training, Learn to Speak English. You know, whatever your needs are, our goal is to help you to meet those needs. And case management is the mechanism to connect you with the services that you need.
That's interesting to hear in terms of the, the case work that's being done around this. I would also want, I'm curious, and I know this is focused on asylum seekers, but the traditional shelter occupants. I have constituents who have been in shelters for two years with CityFEP's vouchers and have not been placed. And so there is a need also for that case support for those who are trying to get permanent housing as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember. CityFEPs and connecting people to permanent housing is something that I think about all day long. CityFEPs is an incredibly valuable tool, but we're also trying to use those vouchers in a really supply-constrained environment. So it's really challenging. We move about two-hundred to fifteen households a week out of shelter into subsidized housing. CityFEPs is the biggest piece of it, although not the only piece of it. But we are, but that's, but there are more households behind them with vouchers, struggling to use them. One of the things that I'm trying to push is thinking about ways that we can use social service dollars to actually develop some additional housing. Because as much as I love and value the work that my colleagues at HPD do to develop more affordable housing, the need is so great. So we're looking at ways that we can expand options for use for CityFEPs. One of the things actually that we did just a couple of weeks ago that I think is potentially really exciting is change CityFEPs so that you can now use that voucher anywhere in the state of New York. We think that has the potential to, to create more housing opportunities for people. But yes, absolutely, people need assistance to be able to, to navigate the process. So we're also doing a lot more training of our shelter staff people, making sure that they have clear opportunities for, for getting assistance if they are not able, if they don't know how to adequately navigate the process themselves, the, the, the shelter staff, so that, that they can do a better job assisting clients.
Thank you.
Now we have Councilmember Williams, followed by Russler.
Hello. Actually, just following up on that question, can you provide more details to what the city is currently doing to expedite the processing of rental assistance? And what additional resources has the city allocated to that since the onset of the asylum seeker influx?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. It's one of my favorite topics, and I can talk about it all day long. So it is incredibly important to us that we are connecting people to permanent housing. Many of the asylum seekers are not eligible for our traditional housing resources. So the answer that I'm gonna give you here is for our general DHS population. But we're, we've made a lot of changes to CityFEPs over the last year or so, the most recent and noticeable of which is that it is now something that you can use statewide. We have worked with the Office of Management and Budget to, to add staff to the teams that do the processing. We're doing a lot of training and engagement with our shelter staff so that, and by our shelter staff, I actually really mean provider shelter staff, but so that they understand the process better, that they are more actively engaged in assisting clients, and that when they do run into trouble with a package, that they have a clear pathway for getting assistance. You know, we're always looking for ways that we can streamline the City, CityFEPs voucher process. It is, but at the end of the day, we are providing a, a public assistance benefit that is fairly extensive. So we, you know, we do require paperwork on behalf of clients, and we also, a fair amount of paperwork on behalf of landlords, too. We wanna make sure that, that units are safe and habitable. So if, if a shelter staff person is having trouble navigating that, we've set up office hours. We've set up better ways to give people feedback in real time on those packages. You know, thinking about, on the supply side of things, we are, you know, HPD has been a really terrific partner, adding more units to, to the housing supply. You know, I'm very excited by, by ways that we're looking at ways that we can, I'm gonna get a little wonky, where we can project-base the CityFEPs vouchers so that not-for-profits can actually use those to acquire buildings and not just rent units. So we have a slew of different things that we have underway, all with the goal of getting more people out of shelter. It's the right thing to do for individual households. You know, it's, while I, I believe in the value of a strong shelter system to help people in a moment of emergency, the end goal for everybody is permanent housing. So it's the right thing to do for the households, and it's the right thing to do for the system as a whole, so that we, we create some more capacity.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sure, as you know, the council really views the rental assistance program as a way to alleviate the shelter system. I think we hear loud and clear that the city is at capacity. So one of the issues with the vouchers is source of income discrimination. And I know there's been money put in to CCHR around this issue. But is there anything proactively that the city is doing to mitigate any negative impact of source of income discrimination?
I, I think as you mentioned, the investment in CCHR and, and making sure that we are able to, to tackle that is something that's really important. You know, the, the legislation that the council passed to make it very clear that source of income discrimination is not acceptable is really important. But we have to be actively enforcing it. So we're working with our colleagues to make sure that's in place. It's, it's not easy, but it's really important work.
Okay, the NYPD spent a million dollars in Fiscal Twenty-Twenty-Three and has already spent four million dollars in Fiscal Twenty-Twenty-Four. It is our understanding that these expenditures were for overtime at the candidate assessment center and for bus security. Can you clarify what the NYPD expenses were for both Fiscal Twenty-Twenty-Three and Fiscal Twenty-Twenty-Four?
Sure. So it, it is overtime. Let me get you the fiscal year breakout. It is, last year FY23 was a million dollars, and thus far, in the current fiscal year, it has been four million, so five between the two fiscal years.
And can you share why it has increased so significantly in the current year?
Sure. I'm gonna defer to others on the operational needs that require NYPD.
The amount of asylum seekers who have come into the city has dramatically increased over the, the past year. And it's, you know, we, we went from even a couple of weeks ago where we were getting two thousand new asylum seekers a week to four thousand. And we've consistently had to open new sites, and we've consistently had security issues in terms of keeping our asylum seekers safe and the surrounding communities safe. A good example of this is at St. John's Villa, where we had constant protesting day in, day out, that we needed to keep the asylum seekers we were housing there safe.
Okay, I just actually have a few more questions for you. How would the responsibilities of the new Office of Asylum Seeker operations differ from Moya? And do we anticipate any duplicated efforts?
Thank you for that question. We work incredibly in close coordination with Moya. We are not duplicating efforts. We figured out pretty early on that the scale of this crisis, this unprecedented humanitarian crisis, required a new type of response. We're really focused on the day-to-day operations and making sure that we are coordinating across these four agencies and the sixteen agencies that were written in the report. And we're really working with Moya on the policy and long-term planning.
Okay, I heard Dr. Long mention re-ticketing. Does your office cover the cost of re-ticketing? Or is that still a cost, an external cost, outside cost of, of nice people who are donating and paying for it?
The city pays for the cost of re-ticketing. It is, it's built into the budgets of, of Dr. Long and Dr. Isco's budgets.
Okay, and is your office a part of the intensified case manage, case management that you mentioned? Your office, is it a part of the case management, the intensified case management being offered to residents that have received a notice to vacate?
Yes, our office is part of the intensive, intensive case management. We're working pretty closely with H and H, which is really leading that effort, to make sure that, that we're getting everything that we want out of that and that it's happening across the system.
Okay, and just one more question from Councilmember Stevens, who had to leave early. She is very interested and has been working on efforts for Black asylum seekers. And so language access has been the number-one complaint. So we just wanted to know what services specifically have been provided to Black asylum seekers, many who are Muslim, which is a whole nother issue.
Yeah, I, I can start. So two things, I think, to note. One is, forgive me if I've given this example in the past, but the way we use Language Line is a very, it's a very inclusive service. So for example, I have one patient in my primary care practice in the South Bronx, where she's from Africa. And whenever she sees me, she smiles because I am, not exaggeration, one of the only people in the world she can talk to. She speaks a rare dialect. Only her husband and me are the two people she could talk to in New York City. So just making the point that we, our Language Line does enable us to communicate effectively with people across two-hundred-and-fifty different languages and dialects. And specifically with respect to people that are asylum seekers that are Muslim. The first day, I remember, we had, Zach and I had about eighty people, if memory serves. I believe it was from Senegal when we had the first version of Randall's Island. And they were joining us. They had nowhere else to go, and they needed to eat. But we didn't have any halal food at that point. So on day one, we had a food truck that came in, provided halal food. But just to simplify, because when you're, especially if you, after you've traveled this far, you don't have to worry about, is this food halal? Is this food halal? One hundred percent of our food at our humanitarian centers is halal now. So it was a good lesson learned. We fixed it on day two. But just to, to show how we're trying to be culturally sensitive for people wherever you're coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Russler, followed by Lee.
Thank you very much, Speaker Adams, and Chair Brannan, and Chair Ayala, and Chair Brewer, who always gives me a hard time for not staying for the whole hearing. So, you know, I'll call her out while she's not here. No, only love for Gail. But thank you to all the central staff and for the whole council for really prioritizing this issue. And, and thank you to all the folks on the dais for being here today. I've had the privilege of working with many of you. And, you know, I know that addressing the asylum seeker crisis was in none of your job descriptions eighteen months ago. And you've all had to work intensely hard over this period to provide care for one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand people that have come to New York City. It's no small feat, and appreciate the hard work that's gone into it. I do have to say, though, my general critique is that we've really been lacking to plan and just trying our best to keep our heads above water as administration, as a city, in this crisis, and not doing as thoughtful a job as we should be doing in planning ahead, that, in ways that can both save us money and deliver better outcomes for the people that are coming through our proverbial doors. And, you know, the purpose of this hearing was about providing oversight on the per diem costs and how we're spending money. And I feel like you all showed up with a lack of information or an unwillingness to answer questions in breaking down costs, agency by agency, understanding the length of stay in the different facilities that you each are operating, so that we can provide more meaningful oversight and input into what models are working better and what models are not. And, you know, I feel like the administration is touting that there have been fifty-six-hundred people that you've successfully helped file federal asylum applications. That means ninety-six out of a hundred people that you've served over this last year and a half, you have not provided help submitting an asylum application. Ninety-six out of a hundred. That is not a success. And I'm glad that things are finally working a little bit, but we have so much further to go. And the area that I'm most concerned about, frankly, is our lack of prioritization of permanent housing. And I appreciate that asylum seekers do not have access to public housing, do not have access to supportive housing. But by our best accounts, there are forty-five-hundred-and-eighty vacant NYCHA apartments, a ninefold increase since the mayor came into office. This is housing that is squarely within our control, and we have twenty-five-hundred vacant supportive housing units. So we're talking about seven thousand vacant units of housing that are fully within the control of the city of New York, that could be housing fifteen thousand-plus people in our shelter system if we invested the resources to fix those units up today. So I'd like to, it looks like Commissioner Park is generously, generously jumping in. Commissioner, I know you're trying here, but this is a serious problem. And we could move close to a third, certainly twenty-five percent of our DHS shelter population out of the system if we were to invest resources in permanent housing. And why are we not doing it?
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, I think you know me well enough to know that permanent housing is, is an enormous priority for me. With all due respect, I think you're significantly oversimplifying the, the reality on the ground. So NYCHA's been a great partner for us. They are also doing an enormous amount of very substantial rehab on their, of their own portfolio, which is incredibly important, right? If we lost our one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand units of NYCHA housing, you know, we would be in even more dire circumstances. So very, you know, glad that they are. So very, you know, glad that they are doing that long term investment. They need vacancies to be able to do checker boarding because a lot of the work that they're doing is not work that they can do with tenant and tenants in place. So this is not a question of NYCHA's sitting on their hands. This is a question of NYCHA is managing competing priorities. We continue to to move households out of the shelter system into NYCHA housing. We have a very close and collaborative relationship with them, but simply looking at the vacancy numbers doesn't tell the entire story.
But I I'm sorry, just I have to jump in here. In 20 months under Mayor Adams, we've seen a ninefold increase, almost 10 times as many vacant NYCHA apartments as the day he came into office. In the most recent budget, he proposed slashing the funding that goes to repairing vacant NYCHA apartments by $30 million and Speaker Adams had to fight to restore that money, which we did. But still, the cost for housing 4,000 families in DHS shelter for a year is 370 million. For 180 million, we could fix up the 4,000 vacant NYCHA apartments, save ourselves money, not be spending stupidly on these hotel costs that are what are driving our increase per diems and make a huge difference. I don't understand why we're not prioritizing those investments and are instead just opening HERC after HERC when we could be driving down the population.
So let me try again to explain that.
Please.
With the caveat that I am not NYCHA and I'm sure be happy to follow up with with our NYCHA colleagues, but.
And the supportive housing piece too, 2,500 vacant supportive housing units is in your portfolio.
Happy to get there as as.
I will not interrupt again for another 30 seconds.
So with respect to the NYCHA units, when they are going to do a significant rehab, right, one of these gut rehab major projects that they have, they cannot do those with tenants in place.
Of course.
Right? So they need to have vacancies that they have available so that they can checker board people around their, right, because in the past, you know, in the distant past, people, when when there was rehab of NYCHA units, people were expected to self relocate. This administration is not taking that perspective, right? It is incredibly important that we are doing this long term investment in NYCHA housing. It does affect the short term ability to move people from DHS to to NYCHA, but that is towards a long term goal of having a more stable NYCHA portfolio. With respect to the supportive housing, we we have done a ton of work to to reduce the vacancy rate in supportive housing. It's half what it was a year ago. What you see now is is driven by a couple of things. First of all, in that number that you're looking at are are certain units that are controlled, although they show up on our dashboard, are not necessarily controlled by by us. There are state players and other partnerships. We are working very closely with them. There's also there's various lags in reporting, but also this is not a static universe of of units that is available, right? We are we are working and then because HPD is a very effective production arm, we have buildings coming online and all the time. So we have sped up the process. We've done a lot of work to speed up the process. We are matching people as quickly as possible. We are revisiting eligibility requirements so that to make sure that that we don't have people who are blocked out of accessing supportive housing because the units are have have requirements that are too specific. So all of that is going on, collaboration with with the state agencies and other partners that are involved in that. But it's we don't have 2,500 units of supportive housing sitting vacant over the long term. This is a rotating number and we are at a, what is a typical vacancy rate, given the fact that this is a stock with some churn.
And sorry, Lincoln, let me just jump in too, just in terms of adding to the stock and supply of affordable housing, like last year, we had one of the best years we've had in years, right? We we closed on about 26,000 units between NYCHA, HPD and HGC. Previous year, we were just over 16,000, right? So we went from 16,000 to 26,000. So I think the.
Most recent numbers were down. I and relative to de Blasio, numbers are down. We can look at the different populations that are being prioritized in the affordable housing numbers, but I don't think saying the production is up is accurate, certainly on the affordable housing side. That being said, I just want to come back. The length of vacancy upon turnover of the NYCHA units has doubled. And so what that means is it's taking twice as long, nearly 300 days for people to get homeless families that have no place to go into that NYCHA apartment. And I raise this here because when it's happening at such a phenomenal scale where the administration is failing to invest in necessary ways to fix up those units, it fills up our homeless shelters, which makes it impossible for us to house the migrants that are now costing us close to $400 a day to house. And so we should, instead of prioritizing just opening HERC after HERC after HERC, prioritize what are the long term permanent housing solutions that we have within our control to that will save us significant money. And so I would ask, why is this administration, I'll shift this one to City Hall, not prioritizing a NYCHA repair squad and investing proactively, bringing agency resources together to fix up these 4,500 vacant NYCHA apartments and expediting the move outs, move ins into the 2,500 vacant supportive housing units that would make such a difference in declining this overall census?
So I'm going to jump in here because poor Molly Schaefer gets to be responsible for all the asylum seekers. She doesn't also have to be responsible for permanent housing. So first of all, NYCHA is not here, so we can we're happy to circle back with NYCHA.
But that was my question was how do we do more together?
Right, but that that being said, they have been a terrific partner. Year in fiscal year 23, relative to fiscal year 22, we we DSS moved 20% more people into or households into subsidized housing across the board, right? So this is using all of our subsidized housing tools, CityFAPs.
What percentage of what percentage did you get for DHS families of total NYCHA availability? Do you have that number?
NYCHA availability in terms of what is truly available is very is much lower than when you and I were collaborating. When you and I were collaborating on this in the de Blasio administration, there were there was less investment in long term substantial NYCHA repairs. So they have less of a need for these checkerboard units. The circum the circumstances on the ground have changed since you and I were collaborating on this in the in the de Blasio administration, but we have worked across the board where this is another place where we are looking at the ecosystem as a whole. HPD has stepped up in tremendous ways. So we are doing, you know, three or four times the number of placements into HPD housing than we were doing when you and I were collaborating in the de Blasio administration. So it is incumbent on us to be looking for all the ways that we can move people into permanent subsidized housing and we are doing that and the number is is 20% higher than it was the previous year.
And Molly, just to add, just last year, we closed on more more homeless units and more supportive housing units than we've ever closed before. This is like including the de Blasio administration.
And the point that I'm making on the DHS move outs into NYCHA was my recollection is at the peak of the de Blasio administration, we were getting about 50% of the vacant units in NYCHA for DHS families exiting shelter. And if we're hitting those numbers again, that'd be great. I'd love to know what those numbers actually are, but my concern is is that we're not doing the work to fix up the apartments to provide the housing that people need. And I don't understand, there's a whole administration focus on let's house migrants, not a whole administration focus on how do we generate the permanent affordable housing that we need. And if that was prioritized in the same kind of way, we could save money and move literally 15,000 people off of your shelter rolls in a period of months.
I I very much wish it was that easy. I can assure you that I am incredibly focused every day on on permanent housing exits. It's it's I have my team has heard me say it, there are three things that keep me up at night. Asylum is one of them. Exits from from shelter into permanent housing is is one of the others.
I have every confidence you are focused on it. My question is, why is City Hall not focused on it? Why is?
And I get I get incredible collaboration and support from the City Hall team. NYCHA has an overall plan that is very different from what the overall NYCHA plan was, you know, five years ago. NYCHA's overall plan involves significant investment in the in long term rehab, which we need, right? If we don't make that rehab, that long term investment in the NYCHA stock, that's 180,000 units of deeply, deeply affordable housing that are going to slowly crumble. And so but that affects the day to day vacancies, but we as an administration have worked to find alternatives to that and and we are continuing to grow the supply of housing that is available for our clients and finding improved ways. And and certainly not saying that there's, you know, not more work to be done. There is always more work to be done.
Commissioner Park, with all due respect, the numbers don't lie. When we've seen a ninefold increase in the number of vacant units, twice as long to turn over an apartment and move a a family into it upon vacancy, that tells a story. It tells a story that weren't that this administration is not prioritizing the permanent housing that is available to us and that is fully within your control as an administration. So that is what I I get that we need to invest in NYCHA units. I get that we need to improve conditions. I get that these buildings and apartments have been crumbling for far too long. I get that that takes more than a day and it takes more than a dollar, but it does save us money to invest in permanent housing instead of costly shelters, costly hotels, where we're spending now nearly $400 a day on on migrants. That is twice as much as what you were spending in housing a homeless family just two, three years ago. So we can drive these costs down if we invest in the permanent affordable housing that we need, especially the stuff that's within our control. This is the lowest of low hanging fruit and I have seen zero prioritization of it from this administration.
So I cannot speak to the specifics of all of the NYCHA processes. I am not NYCHA.
No.
I can assure you that we are, as an administration, very focused on this from the from the top down. This is NYCHA is a piece of the toolbox. They are only a piece of the toolbox because they have there are competing priorities for those NYCHA units, including the investment in NYCHA housing. But we are, as an administration, focused on building other tools so that we can continue and grow the pipeline of people who are moving out of the shelter system.
I completely agree and I'm sorry for going over and I thank you Chair Brannon for giving me a moment, but I I just mean to say, if we're going to ask private landlords to do more, if we're going to push to make sure that every voucher holder is getting into an apartment, it starts with our own house. It starts with the units that we control. It starts with the NYCHA units and it starts with the supportive housing units. And to see those vacancy rates go up and up and up under this administration, it sends a very clear message. And I believe that we have the ability to invest and prioritize resources to fix up these apartments and move truly 15,000 people conservatively into housing, permanent housing, and dramatically drive down our costs on hotels if we were to prioritize it. And I appreciate you saying that it is a priority. I have seen zero actual example, zero demonstration of that on the ground, zero demonstration of data points moving in the right direction to show it.
The supportive housing vacancy rate is 50% of what it was a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. So I just wanted to focus actually a couple of my questions more on the nonprofit side, which we sort of touched upon a little bit, but that's my area that I knew before. So just around the meal contracts, because I know that, just out of curiosity, how many of these were contractors that were used in the Get Food NYC, which was during COVID? And have any of those food vendors been vetted or looked at in terms of the costs and the contracting? Only because the only reason why I say that is because when I look at the the cost of what the city's spending on the meals, I know that, for example, I ran, this is a little different, DIFTA programs, like Meals on Wheels programs, but we would get reimbursed by the city on average anywhere from $5.50 to like $9, but the unit cost is at least 10 or 11. I know the national average is about 11.25, $1.25 or something around there. And so I'm just wondering, you know, as a whole, have those Get Food NYC vendors been looked at? How can we save costs there? And then also I know that there's been a lot of conversation from looking at switching over from emergency to more long term solutions. And so has the city looked at contracting with some of the nonprofit providers that are already doing this work in multiple languages, in a lot of culturally competent settings? Have they done that? If not, moving forward, is that a conversation that is being had? Because even if you just go to UNH, for example, right? The Settlement Houses, which we were part of, in that network alone, there's a lot of providers that do the casework, the meals, the language access, the mental health services, connecting people in the community. And so how can we better utilize already existing providers that we know are doing good work, who actually abide by a lot of the city contracts already?
Great questions. I'll start and I'll see if any of my colleagues want to add on anything further. So the first question is a great one. So how does what we did during COVID relate to the way that we're using food vendors now? And LIC Commissary was actually one of the main food vendors that we use during the test and trace effort to deliver, I believe it was, if memory serves, 2.2 million meals. We'll have to double check that throughout the COVID pandemic. That's 2.2 million times people didn't have to leave their homes and risk potentially infecting others, going to the grocery store, things like that. So that was a vendor that we had a good experience with and we brought them on to do this work going forward. Another vendor we've used is Rethink Food, which is a vendor that actually looks at a lot of local businesses and to help them sees where they have extra capacity and actually uses that capacity to bring food, healthy food, fresh food onto site at our sites. So it's a way to support New York City across multiple different restaurants. Going forward, in addition to what we're currently doing with those vendors, food is one of the RFPs that we are going to be going through now that we've put out. So look forward to all of your good points about finding the right organizations to provide the right food that's culturally responsive, things like that. We'll have the opportunity to do that through the food RFP.
Okay.
You want anything?
The only thing I'd add is that we are actively looking at how to get more local nonprofits and local groups involved in this effort. Obviously, Commissioner Molly Park, most of her sites are run by local nonprofits, but we welcome any suggestions that you have.
Yeah, especially when it comes to wraparound or any of the casework services. I think there's a lot of great partners that could be had out there. Okay, and I'll yield because a lot of my questions were already asked before, but I just wanted to give a special shout out to Dr. Long and I see Laura Atlas in the back over there because they've been extremely, you guys have been extremely helpful in helping us navigate the HERC in our district, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for being a great advocate for your community.
Okay, we just have like four or five more hours to go. I wanted to, two last things. Number one, I guess, just just broadly, whoever wants to answer it. Do you think what we're doing is working? I think one of the things that that I think my colleagues and I would, obviously, we could do the math, how many asylum seekers have come in through the system and now we got it. But I think it would be helpful for us to understand how many folks were helping move through the system and get on their own two feet. So have you seen progress in the way we were doing stuff sort of in the very beginning to what's what's happening now?
So I'll take the first shot at this. I think what the city is doing is a great model for what should be done should be done across the country. You know, immigration, this is a national crisis. I'd argue it's an it's an international crisis. If you look sort of at the history of mass migration to this country, going back to World War II, whether it was World War II refugees after World War II, whether it was Soviet Jews, Cubans, Haitians, Vietnamese boat people in the 70s. In each case, the federal government ran a large scale process to manage the influx of people, get them work authorization, process their their paperwork. There's a lot of things that we need to be doing that are way outside the capabilities or even the the authorities of a of a municipality to be able to do. And so I think what we are doing is working, but this really requires real effort from the federal government to not just manage this crisis, but to turn it into an opportunity. And I think one of the things that all of us fundamentally believe is that if you make investments in immigrants, it pays huge dividends for the country culturally, economically. People are worried about them taking jobs. We know that they create jobs and that there's a lot of opportunity here with the right federal leadership.
Now, just add on a couple of points. I think two points that I think about a lot when I think about what's working now. And then the third thing, sort of looking forward, I think we are at a stage in the crisis where, as Molly said, it's time to pivot and shift and go in a direction that we believe will work going forward. Two things that I I think have worked especially well now, one is the Arrival Center. So other cities have not created an Arrival Center anywhere close to ours. I really do think it's an example, as Zach said, of a national model, but just to show what what working means to me. So number one is that up to one out of every four people that enter the front door of the Arrival Center will leave that same door within 24 hours, either to resettle in New York City with friends and family that we've helped identify or to be re-ticketed to somewhere else that meets their needs better than New York City could. So before the Arrival Center, that up to one out of every four people was essentially zero out of every four people. So that was huge progress that we made in terms of helping people to get what they wanted within the first 24 hours. The other thing that the Arrival Center did that I believe is working, again, as a primary care doctor, is it still bothers me and keeps me up at night, just this picture of this child that had a witnessed seizure where his life was threatened right at our feet because Texas took his medication away at the border. In the same way that, as the example I gave earlier too, a woman receiving her first prenatal visit at nine months pregnant is a violation of her human rights. And she could have had that prenatal visit in multiple opportunities in Texas, all of which were denied to her. That's denying her her human rights. So here in New York City, not only are we effective in the Arrival Center, but we're compassionate in giving people what is their human right that was taken away from them in Texas. The other thing that I'm that convinces me that what we're doing is effective now is, again, we throw these numbers around a lot, but just 130,000 people have received help from us. Half of them, 65,000, with our help, were able to leave our city system and complete their journeys. That's 65,000 people that will celebrate their birthday in their new apartment or with friends and family that they love, that are not fearing persecution in the country they came from and are not stepping over dead bodies in the journey up here and continuing to be traumatized by that journey. That's 65,000 people that are already in a better. That's 65,000 people that are already in a better place because of New York City. That's more people than most other cities have received, maybe all other cities have received, that we've been able to successfully not only help, but get them to complete their journeys with our help. Going forward for me, one of the really important things is that at this stage in the crisis, as we've talked about throughout this hearing, we've learned a ton. How do we apply everything that we've learned in a comprehensive and organized way going forward? And that's what case management is. Within a matter of weeks, we're going to have every asylum seeker in our whole system labeled red, yellow, or green, meaning we understand what their specific challenges as an individual or family are. We're going to have case managers to meet with them regularly, twice a month, to help them in their specific situations surmount those challenges. For about half the people in our system so far, again, we've succeeded. Imagine what we can do if we're effectively solving resettlement, solving work authorization based on your individual need, solving re-ticketing, getting OSHA training, teaching English as a second language. For me, that's something that we've done a good job of so far, but doing great, I think will define the next stage of this crisis for us as a city.
One last thing, I guess, maybe for HPD. I know the mayor announced back in May, I believe, a program to move some of the asylum seekers to temporary shelters outside the city. Could you tell us how that's going?
Yeah, so we have about 18 hotels upstate in various different communities, from the Hudson Valley to Albany to Rochester to the Buffalo area in Erie County. So we have a number of folks, just a little shy of 2,000 folks, I think about 1,800 folks upstate. And so it's going well. Like, we've developed good relationships with all those communities. We have productive relationships with local CBOs that are supporting these folks that are in our very shelters upstate. We get a lot of feedback from those local, you know, mayors and county executives and, you know, the DSS equivalents up there. And they-- the great thing is they care about our folks, too, you know? They've really embraced our folks. Our kids are going to school up there, right? Our folks here have developed relationships with school districts in Erie County, Rochester, et cetera, and like the schools have embraced our kids. So while there definitely was some pushback, I think the partners we found have really kind of adopted and are loving our kids that way.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate your time today. We're going to hear from the public now.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next panel is going to be Chris Mann. Our next panel is Chris Mann, Tamiya Santana. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Brandon, Ayala and Brewer. Thank you and members of the Finance Oversight and Investigations and General Welfare Committees for the opportunity to testify. My name's Chris Mann. I'm the Assistant Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at WIN, the nation's largest provider of shelter and services to families with children experiencing homelessness. We operate 14 shelters and nearly 500 units of permanent supportive housing throughout the five boroughs. Currently, 6,500 people call WIN home every night, including 3,600 children. WIN's always welcomed immigrants to our shelters, and we work to ensure a safe place to rest, heal, and recover for all New Yorkers in need, regardless of immigration status. Amidst significant budget cuts, WIN's provided an array of necessary services not covered by contracts provided by the city. In response to the current unsustainable path, the city must prioritize moving people out of shelter and into permanent housing, which costs far less. Additionally, the city must invest the necessary upfront resources needed to assist all eligible with asylum, work, and TPS applications. The city must focus on long-term solutions rather than short-sighted cuts and attacks on essential rights, which will end up costing the city enormously in the long run. First, the city must prioritize implementing the expansion of the City FEPs voucher that this city council boldly passed, which would significantly increase capacity for new arrivals and save the city an enormous amount of money. According to WIN analysis, expanding City FEPs vouchers to New Yorkers at risk of becoming homeless would result in savings of approximately $730 million annually. New York City should also expand access to housing vouchers for all families in need, regardless of their immigration status, a move that could save the city up to $3 billion annually. New arrivals are also ready, willing, and able to work, but aren't legally allowed to do so. For the new arrivals, the key to getting to work is completing the asylum and TPS applications as quickly as possible, and the city must increase funding for legal assistance for new arrivals in the form of asylum, work authorization, and TPS application assistance. And finally, there's absolutely no need or justification for eliminating the right to shelter, a right that exemplifies our values as New Yorkers. The city just needs to prioritize this menu of solutions that's already been identified. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tamiya Blackman Santana. I'm the Chief Officer of Engagements and Inclusion at Ballet Hispanico. I'm here just representing the joy and the genius of the arts. I feel like I'm preaching to the choir. I don't need to talk to anyone on our city council about social, emotional learning and how it affects the children that are in our city, but just really wanted to take the time as more migrant children are entering into the New York City Public School, a reminder of what our organization is doing. We've been around for 53 years with the largest Latin arts institution in America. We now partner with Columbia University's Teachers College and have a Latvian African diaspora curriculum that goes into 45 New York City public schools in all five boroughs. Listening to the panel discussion before, listening to my colleague, you know, we're all facing something that we never have before in our lifetime. And I just want to take some time to please also remember the arts and remember children that are entering into our public school and that we're all in it together. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Thanks for all you do. Now we have Christopher Leon Johnson.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Hello, Fester. The reason I'm here because I'm here to make a big statement here. And the reason this migrant crisis is going on with this spending is because of the council member right here, Justin Brandon. He's the reason this is going on. And he knows it. He's spending all this money, these corrupt nonprofits, like Make the Road New York and the Work of Justice Project and Envision Freedom Fund and all these corrupt organizations. And all he's caring about is staying re-elected, and he knows it. He don't care about New York City. He doesn't care about America. All he cares about is his own political career. He knows his campaign is sinking, and now he has to spend all this money into these nonprofits to keep himself re-elected. Now, recently, he just gave $6 million to a Muslim-based nonprofit. I am not xenophobic. I love my Muslims, unlike you, who need to really condemn Hamas for vomiting and condemn that organization with a lifetime for marching around Bay Ridge and assaulting cops. And you know what you're doing, Justin. You're allowing her to happen because you're scared of Nardine Qosani. You know who she is. She runs with them a lifetime. She's running around Bay Ridge, running around old New York City, saying death to the Jews, getting rid of all the Jewish people, and all you care about is staying re-elected. And everybody knows it. That's why I call you Fester. But I'm going to say this right now, November 7th, you're going to lose your job. Vote for REK in the city council, November 7th. Vote Republican, because Justin-- yeah, you're smiling. You're smiling, but you know your job is numbered. None of these elected officials ain't coming out for you. Marjorie's not coming out for you. Catalita Cruz ain't coming out for you. Max Rose is not coming out for you, and you know it. So it's all over, bro. It's game over. Yeah, you can nod all you want, but I'm going to see you on Twitter tonight. I'm going to run it, and everybody's going to like it because you're a fraud. You're a fake person, and everybody knows it. Vote your fat ass out. Vote the fat fuck out. You're a piece of shit. Fuck you, man. Fuck you, man. Yo, fuck you, man. You're a piece of shit. Fuck you, nigga.
Okay, with that, this hearing is adjourned. What? Oh, hey, we still have three more on Zoom, sorry. I've got Ashley Chen, followed by Juan Diaz on Zoom, sorry.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to Chair Brandon and members of the Finance, General Welfare, and Oversight and Investigations Committee for the opportunity to testify. My name is Ashley Chen, and I'm the Policy Analyst at the Chinese-American Planning Council. CPC is the largest Asian-American social service organization in the U.S., providing vital resources to more than 280,000 people per year through more than 50 programs at over 30 sites across Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens. CPC employs over 700 staff speaking 25 languages, whose comprehensive services are linguistically accessible, culturally sensitive, and highly effective in reaching low-income and immigrant individuals and families. I want to start off by sharing a story of an asylum seeker that we serve. One mother enrolled in our Promise NYC program, explaining that she and her children came to the U.S. in order to escape life-threatening shortages of medications that they faced in Venezuela. Her oldest child would have died without access to medications and the treatment. There was no time to wait for the strenuous and long immigration processes, and therefore is now seeking asylum. She's relying on Promise NYC so that she can access childcare for her children and thus access employment and income to support her family. This is one of so many stories that we have heard that should create a sense of urgency for our elected leaders, especially the Adams Administration. As an immigrant serving social service agency, CPC has a moral obligation to provide the support and assistance to these migrants, but the city is proposing an impossible choice through budget cuts when social service agencies are already filling the gap in city funding. We must live up to our values as a sanctuary city and provide the resources for our migrants to find permanent housing, work, and ultimately stability. It is unconscionable in one of the wealthiest cities in the world that we are pitting communities against each other for resources. CPC is part of the People's Plan and endorses their platform of creating a care-based system. Rather than proposed 15% budget cuts across agencies, they're providing direct services for our migrant communities. In fact, the administration is proposing budget cuts that significantly overstates the fiscal impacts of migrant arrivals, according to the Fiscal Policy Institute. The city has failed to handle the influx of migrants with care and dignity, investing tactics that are meant to harm our vulnerable communities rather than empower them. This is unacceptable and fundamentally goes against the core values of this city. We are a city of immigrants, and it's about time we treat our neighbors--
Time has expired. Thank you.
--with the love and compassion that they deserve. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Now we have Juan Diaz.
You may begin.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Ayala, Councilmember Brandon, and all members of the committees for holding today's oversight hearing on the city's asylum seeker response efforts. My name is Juan Diaz, and I am a Policy and Advocacy Associate at Citizen Committee for Children. I'm a multi-issue children's advocacy organization dedicated to ensuring that every New York child is healthy, housed, educated, and safe. We acknowledge the city's efforts to address the unprecedented migration of asylum-seeking families and individuals looking for opportunities to thrive and contribute to the city and nation. However, CCC and advocates across the city are deeply concerned about the proposed shelter policy of 60-day limits for immigrant families with children and how this can change-- how this change could have a negative impact on migrant children's education and overall well-being. We are pleased to know that the right to shelter revision will now enter negotiation process. As such, we urge all parties involved to work on solutions to secure the right to shelter and to set the path to cost-saving solutions like expedite move-outs, to set aside affordable housing units by reducing steps and streamlining applications process, and ensuring that vacant positions at housing assistance agencies are filled. To safeguard the housing economic security of New York City most vulnerable, the city institutions should consider the major proposed 15% budget cuts to agencies like the Department of Social Services and the Department of Home Services, which would only exacerbate an already problematic situation of individuals and families not receiving benefits such as SNAP, cash assistance, and housing vouchers on time. Families and students in shelter, regardless of immigration status, need the support to thrive while their families are placed in stable housing. CCC urges the city to support effective implementation and legislation that would expand City FEPs eligibility so that we can have open more shelter space and save the city millions in administrative and funding costs.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Now we have Rosanna Cruz.
You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to testify today. My name is Rosanna Cruz, and I work with Good Shepherd Services. We have been hosting the Asylum Seeker Resource Fair since last year, the last one we hosted in May in collaboration with the National Guard. Our main goal as an agency has been to connect asylum seekers to essential resources, social health, immigration, educational, and mental health services. Today, I want to highlight our frustration with the current situation going on with the asylum seekers. Legal services is one of the major concern that we have. There is still a lack of legal services availability for individuals to apply for the asylum seeker in TPS. Although TPS has been recently approved of Venezuela, only two, about 2,000 immigrants have applied, and less than 400 has been Venezuelan. New York City has not prioritized Venezuela. They have not received the legal needed services that they need, which is a shame in this city. Asylum seekers from all the country have to receive expedited legal assistance when they come to U.S. Why now, Venezuelans? Why don't we have a plan to walk them through the process and provide the legal support that they need? Asylum seekers are still struggling to find legal support. They are relying on notarios and individuals that lack the legal expertise to file the process for them, and they are getting in debt when they don't have the financial means to pay for the process. The city has allocated so many fundings for legal immigration assistance for asylum seeker, but we have yet to see many of our clients and community residents that receive social legal support. We need an immediate plan to assist asylum seekers. DSS should connect asylum seeker to legal assistance instead of assuming that they should go out on the street looking for assistance on their own. Or asylum seeker within the shelter system should be scheduled for legal immigration consultation--
Your time has expired. Thank you.
--as soon as they arrive to the shelter. Thank you so much for giving us this platform.
Thank you, Rosanna. Okay, with that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.